Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the special meeting of December eighth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. Roll call, Mr. Steele.
Thank you. Commissioner Alexander, here. Vice President Bogus, here. Commissioner Shu.
Here.
Commissioner Matamady. Commissioner Sanchez, here. Commissioner Wiseman Ward. President Lamb.
Here.
Thank you.
At this time before the board goes into closed session, I call for any speakers to the closed session items listed in the agenda. There'll be a total of five minutes for speakers. Are there any speakers for public comment?
Seeing none in person. If you're on Zoom and you care to speak to any of the items in closed session, please raise your hand at this time. Seeing none.
Thank you. So at this time, I'll call a recess of this meeting. I'm going to close session. Thank you. I'd like to reconvene to open session. Vote on student expulsion matters. I move approval of the stipulated expulsion agreement of one middle school student, matter number twenty-two, twenty-three, number six from the district for the remainder of the fall semester, two thousand and twenty-two, suspended enforcement of the expulsion for spring, two thousand and twenty-three. I move approval of the stipulated expulsion agreement of one middle school student, matter number twenty, twenty-two, I'm sorry. Yes, twenty-two to twenty-three, number seven, from the district for the remainder of the fall semester, two thousand and twenty-two, suspended enforcement of the expulsion for spring, two thousand and twenty-three. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Mr. Steele.
Thank you. On six and seven. Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Vice President Bogus.
Yes.
Commissioner Shu.
Yes.
Commissioner Matamady.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward.
Yes.
President Lamb.
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. Roll call, I'm sorry, report from closed session. In five matters of anticipated litigation, the board gave direction to general counsel. In the matter of student J R versus S F Unified, O A H, case number two thousand and twenty-two, zero-nine, zero-four, zero-five, the board by a vote of seven eyes gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In the matter of student E H versus S F U S D, O A H, case number two thousand and twenty-two, zero-nine, zero-eight-one-six, by the board by a vote of four, seven eyes gives authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In the matter of student J M versus S F U S D, O A H, case number two thousand and twenty-two, zero-nine, zero-five-seven-two, the board by a vote of seven eyes gave the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In the matter of student T O versus S F U S D, O A H, case number two thousand and twenty-two, zero-nine, zero-one-eight-one, the board a vote of seven eyes voted, gives the authority to the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. And finally, in the matter of student J T versus S F U S D, O A H, case number two thousand and twenty-two, zero-eight-zero-seven-five-four, the board by a vote of seven eyes voted, voted to give the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. And that concludes the readout from closed session. Now can, going to agenda item D, our action tonight. Amendment to the agreement for services with Alvarez and Marcel Public Sector Services to assess and stabilize the empower San Francisco. I'd like to ask for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Like to call on Superintendent Wayne.
Thank you, President Lamb. Good evening, everyone. So if we can project the presentation. Thank you. If you go to the first slide, so I think as people are aware, on November seventh, we declared a payroll state of emergency, recognizing the need to take extraordinary corrective action to fix and power S F. Because we know, you know, our number one priority needs to be to make our staff whole, be transparent about what we're doing to address this issue and also be held accountable to following through on the plans we're presenting. Since then, we have made progress. If you, sorry, go two more slides. We have made progress in numerous areas. I want to highlight, we do, did increase our case management. That's a critical team, and they've been working hard to close tickets. I'm in the command center daily myself and have been seeing them and sometimes hearing the bell they ring when they close a ticket because we're, you know, we're challenging them to get as many closed as possible. So in a highlight, we resolved like the four-three B contributions process. In a previous update I had shared, we resolved the health benefits issues. We resolved in the system and understood why these problems were happening. We're still needing to now follow up with people. So I was talking with teachers yesterday who want to increase their contribution. We know we need to do that work, but we were able to get to the kind of root cause for those to be able to address them. And then just want to highlight one more bullet. You know, we have mapped out the work needed over the next ninety days to stabilize the system. We have eight teams in the command center. They now each have clear objectives and tasks that need to be completed, and we're going through prioritizing what the, you know, what's going to be done when. But it's really a comprehensive approach and having everybody together has been incredibly helpful. You know, but we still face, if you go to the next slide, challenges and barriers to stabilization. And these include, we still have on our side multiple vacancies and we've had, you know, people leave as well. You know, we appreciate the staff we've reassigned to the command center, but it's taking time to train and onboard in this, in this new role. One thing that's really critical is we, and something we need to build in and is one that we know we need to build in to have a stable system is to have more redundancy. That means having more people able to do the same tasks. And so we end up needing to have a trade-off of whether, you know, to fix this system over here or address this issue over there, because sometimes it's the same people with the same skills who have to do both. And then just recognizing these are very interdependent systems. And so if you go to the next slide, that's why I'm coming tonight to ask for a contract amendment with A and M. Where we're asking that it will increase their capacity, they'll double the amount of staff participating in the command center, extend the support through up to May thirty-first. I think one thing we've recognized when we presented the initial scope, it was very focused on the issues identified in the tickets we've received, but this is all part of our whole system. And so like, you know, the command center and thus the work that A and M has been doing is part of our ongoing operations such as our end-of-year activities, which is new. This is our new, new, first time presenting, producing W twos from W twos from the A, from Empower, and even it actually takes different paper to do. So like, they're, they're helping us with that. And then lastly, giving time to have an exit plan. We do not want, we appreciate A and M, they are not meant to be here forever and for, you know, a real long time. So they're then leaving the documentation and the processes behind to help us continue with the corrective action. Steps will need to take because not everything will be resolved in this time and then also just help us resume normal S F U S D operations. So I know when bringing forward, you know, a contract amendment like this, we want our resources to be supporting our student outcomes. And that's what we're going to be talking about tonight. But we understand to do that, we need to make sure that we are operating a successful district. And so I've been looking to understand more, you know, what does it take to do that? And why hadn't we done that up until this point? And so, you know, so when I say we need to bring this forward, this amendment to increase our capacity, actually have recommendations from several different sources. So in looking at the, just in doing a review of the initial implementation to understand what happened, the emphasis had recommended additional twenty-eight staff in addition to the current staff in payroll and in H R and in technology to transition to empower. But this recommendation came at a time where we were reducing, you know, millions of dollars in school sites. And so it wasn't tenable to be able to move forward on that. Then also, we now have, I shared last time, we have been escalated to, we're on the global escalation team for SAP, or their teams out here, and they've been analyzing what they, what we need. And they have also made a recommendation of increasing staffing and looking rather than just the number of employees, the number of assignments we have. And because recognizing we have a district where people do different jobs and that actually is a different assignment in the district. So for example, I was talking with the teacher yesterday whose pay was accurate for the school year, but the summer school pay was an issue. And summer school, while it's the same employee, it's a different job, different job description, different hours, different salary schedule. All these need to get uploaded in the system. And so it's not like, you know, we just have ten thousand employees. We actually have, you know, twenty thousand plus assignments. And then lastly, you know, A and M came in when we are now in a state of emergency, you know, and so we're really going to need to, and their assessment said you need up to thirty to fifty F T E to be able to successfully implement this. And so, you know, again, I know we're increasing the, the costs of this contract for additional support, but when looking at the implementation, we really should have invested between seven million, even up to twelve million in staffing for the last two years to successfully implemented Empower. And so now, you know, we're bringing forward those costs now with a premium because we are in a state of emergency. Do want to be clear, if you go to the next slide, we're not, we do have some salary savings from vacancies in our operations department. When I first brought the contract, I shared from quarter one. We, we filled some positions, but also people have left, and so we have more salary savings. We're using some carryover funds that were unspent from twenty-one, twenty-two, and we are not using the unrestricted general funds that, you know, are the primary funds for our schools. Lastly, I appreciate, you know, again, A and M has been here. They've done their analysis. They offered the corrective action plan, have been helping us launch the command center. And, you know, they're helping us do the review we need to do to understand what happened and why. So you heard some of that when I was sharing the original recommendation around staffing. I do want to invite Erin Covington to come back up and, because we still hear this question. She spoke to it last time of why not get rid of Empower S F? And if, if, if I could, I would. I say, I understand people want a system that works, and it feels like this isn't the system that works. Well, there's two issues. I'll speak to one and I'm asking Erin to speak to another. One is bringing back the previous system would be incredibly time-intensive. We don't have the capacity to do that. To be frank, maybe after month one, like we could have turned back the clock, maybe month two. We're now in a new school year. We have literally hired, you know, thousands of, more than, you know, hundreds in the thousands of employees who would all have to be re-entered into the previous system. And so there's no way now, now going back from just a logistical, practical point of view. But also what A and M's analysis is, you know, demonstrates that whatever system we have, we have issues. So that's where you can speak to the the outcome of our, of your random sample of payroll tickets.
Yep. Thank you. So earlier this week, we conducted a random sample of the roughly ten thousand tickets that are outstanding. So it was a sample population of four hundred and forty-seven. And so upon review of those tickets, what we observed is that many fifty, sixty percent of the tickets relate to process issues, which means defining the business requirements, assigning roles and responsibilities, and adequately training staff. So there are still systems issues that do need to be addressed, but the primary driver of the issues that we are seeing is a result of poor definition of business requirements and the need to train and staff the organization.
Yeah. So again, just one, that's a question that comes up a lot and one people to understand, we've taken it seriously. And this is our assessment and, and what you'd understand that this is our assessment at this time. So if you go to the next slide, just what's next. So we're asking that you approve the amendment and that this will help us accelerate issue resolution in the command center. And really working, you know, we have our dashboard up. You can, you can see we're working on faster processing of those issues. We have the end-of-year activities and getting out those W twos. And then, you know, again, doing that prioritization and ongoing prioritization so we can, you know, be responding in real time to the needs we hear from our our teachers and our staff and, and while also doing the fixes and committed to these regular updates as well. So so with that, that, that's presenting this, this contract, I would just want, I know there was a motion in a second. I'd like to also note that, kind of as a best practice, one to, there's names in the amendment, but we're going to change those to roles. So, you know, just so it's, it's clear what role is doing what, it has what responsibilities. And that's, I think, a good practice in in contracts to focus on. So we're clear in the organization where this is situated. So if, if you don't mind acknowledging that, that will be part of the, what you would approve.
And that those modifications would be both in the First Amendment and the contractor agreement?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we would repost it as, as amended.
Thank you, Dr. Wayne. And at this time, I'd like to call for public comment.
Thank you, President Lamb. We have two cards for in-person. Which time?
This time, two minutes each speaker, please.
Thank you. Matthew Trahan and Leslie Hu, come on up to the desk.
Do I get a timer?
It's, I got it.
Perfect. Two minutes?
That thing stuck. Two minutes. Yes. Go ahead.
So I'm, I'm pretty uninformed. I just came here from school. I don't know how these work. I don't even know what I have to say is of any use, but I wanted to give you a teacher's perspective on the whole empowered debacle. You know, I didn't even know this meeting was happening, like with so much with planning, with meetings, with grading, with late-night emails, letters of rec, you know, working through my lunch period, like, we can't, teachers can't stay informed of what's going on. I feel like this meeting was just dropped on us. I think twenty-four hours is what you guys give for these special sessions. Before Empower, it was super simple. We would sign in our initials and we got paid the same thing every month. We never had to worry about what was going to happen. Never, ever did I have any type of error. And power comes along, dropped on us suddenly last year in the middle of the school year, and it's been disaster after disaster. I mean, we're paying payroll specialists to, to help our payroll specialist from the district. Like everything that you guys have said today, it seems like, oh, it's really complicated. I, I just don't understand why we can't fix this. Why is this not fixed already? I mean, for, we paid fourteen million dollars for this program. What have we gotten for it? We're paying, we've paid two million dollars, two-point-eight million dollars for this, for this consulting firm. We're going to pay them another eight million dollars. Like, what are we getting from this? I mean, my, my coworkers, every day I see them in the, in the workroom and we're like, every person has, has a gripe. Every person has an issue. Four-three B contributions, getting their U S F dues all pulled out at once suddenly instead of being taken out each month. Teachers getting charged money instead of getting paid. I mean, eight million dollars for this program for this consulting firm is a hundred and eleven years of my job. A hundred and eleven years of me being a Spanish teacher at school. I mean, this is alienating teachers. I think lots of teachers are going to leave this profession because of this debacle. Our job is already hard enough. Like worrying about getting paid is like, should be the least of our worries. And if you're going to spend money, if you're going to spend fourteen million dollars on a program, you're going to spend two-point-eight million for this consulting firm, and then you're going to spend another eight million. Why not fix the holes in our walls? Why not fix our broken ceilings? Our ceiling, like, replace the dead trees? Fix, get the rats out of our walls. Like, there, there's so much that needs to be done and we're spending this money on suits. Like.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Leslie Hu. I'm the Secretary of United Educators of San Francisco. I'm here because I do want to say that I'm, we're really glad and excited that there seems to be acceleration of resolving tickets and fishing at root causes, which we actually wish had been happening months ago, that the mood is still extremely high to resolve the issues faster. We need to be done to prevent the issues from happening in the first place. And one of the things that's really concerning from readings, the the documents that came out on the board agenda is that the additional eight million dollars to ask for this contractor to fix these existing problems, that's also being extended to May, which is extremely concerning. Since this implies that's going to be a much longer timeline to fix, that is a timely crisis right now. And that's extremely concerning for us. This amount of money, as the previous educator had said, this additional eight million dollars, while it is still really important for us to fix these issues, this money is being taken away from students. We need this money to fix all sorts of things that are happening in our buildings, but also the fact that we are not even addressing a major thing that we have been struggling with the last two years, which is this educator shortage that we have. We all know it's not an educator shortage, it's a shortage of wage and benefits and respect. And if we don't get a handle on this problem, we're still going to be continuing to bleed money to pay for these contractors to fix this problem when this money should be going straight to students. Thank you.
Thank you. Please raise your hand if you're on Zoom and you care to speak to the amendment to the contract at this time. Can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please? Thank you. President Lamb, there are three hands up.
Okay. I'll be up to two minutes each person.
Thank you. Emily, go ahead. You have two minutes.
My name, hi, thanks. My name's Emily Murphy. I'm a parent of a Gwen Park student and I'm a law professor at UC Hastings and I teach contracts. And every lawyer parent I have spoken to in the district wants to know where the accountability is for S F U S D's general counsel's office for who negotiated these agreements in the first place. Because what it seems to be from the outside, and we will be asking for this accountability and for more information, is that Empower, someone negotiated this contract with Empower initially. They are clearly in breach. And we are paying for it. This, our students are paying for the breach. This, it's, I would like to know more about the potential litigation positions you're going to take to protect and recoup the student-focused money that should be going to our teachers. But I have to say, I know a lot of lawyer parents in this district and we are all astonished at what appears from the facts available to us to be borderline incompetence in the S F U S D general counsel's office. So we'd really like to hear about some accountability at that end, too. We got to fix these problems if we need to spend money right now, but we're going to have to figure out how to get this back from Empower because they're in clear breach. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Chris Claus. I'm a special education teacher at Washington High School. We've had educators speak at this, these meetings before. You've talked, Superintendent Wayne, to a lot of educators from Lowell High School yesterday. You've spoken to us. You've listened. There's not a lot more that I can say other than I am, I'm torn on this because I want these payroll issues resolved, but this money absolutely could have been used for a better purpose had the district planned according to what was needed to implement the system correctly the first time. When I was getting my bachelor's degree in technical theater, one of my teachers had a phrase, it was work smarter, not harder. And for that person, that meant that you measure twice to cut once. That means that you implement it right the first time to avoid spending money and hurting people the next time. What I'm dismayed about tonight is that there is very little opportunity for people to speak because we weren't really aware that this meeting was happening. Not everyone is plugged in. It's the end of the semester. It's finals week next week for all of our high schools. And I feel that it would only be right for the victims of this to be involved in the conversations around the solution. And that does not just mean educators. That means every single employee of the school district should have an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah? Sarah, are you there? Elizabeth?
Hi, this is Elizabeth Statmore. I'm a math teacher from Lowell High School. I want to thank Dr. Wayne again for meeting with me and fifty of my colleagues yesterday here in this boardroom. We really appreciate the accountable conversation, even though it was, at times, I know it was challenging. I want to echo some of the calls for professional, for accountability for some of the, what, what I can only describe as professional malpractice, which comes from a previous a previous administration in the district. But unfortunately, you know, we're kind of in the pottery barn world where we've broken it or it's broken and we own it. I am extremely concerned about end-of-year tax issues, and these are problems that happened in S F U S D. These happened on our watch. We can't blame Infosys or SAP for the failure to calculate our tax withholding correctly. Many of us teachers talked to Dr. Wayne yesterday about the fact that last, that in April, many of us discovered that due to under withholding over the course of our ten months of employment, we owed thousands of dollars. I owed the feds seven thousand dollars for last year's under withholding, and I'm really concerned about that continuing again next year. I won't be able to afford to keep working for S F U S D if I'm losing money. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sarah, one more time, are you there?
Yes, I'm there. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I'm a substitute teacher for S F U S D and I've worked for the district since two thousand and one. And because of Empower S F, and they, they didn't pay my, my C T A union dues, I had a disability last year that required me to work with the online program. I didn't get work and I'm losing my health insurance. And I don't want to lose my health insurance. I have been a loyal, loyal employee. My husband is a para educator and they're going to dock five hundred dollars. That'll be twenty-five percent of his take-home salary. He told me he can't afford it. He will not be able to pay expenses. And I'm, you know, this because, because of Empower S F, I'm losing this. I'm working now like consistently all the time. And I'm losing my health insurance because of Empower S F. I need, I would like someone to resolve this. I want my insurance to continue.
Sarah, could you please email me your personal information? Are you still there?
I am still there.
Great, yeah. My, my, my email is S T E E L E J one.
Hold on. I have to write, type that out.
All right.
One second.
Take your time.
S T.
E E L E J, the number one, at S F U S D.
E D U.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes public comment. President Lamb.
Thank you. Thank you to the public. This time I'd like to open it up for comments from colleagues and board members. Questions for the superintendent. Vice President Bogus.
Thank you. I was wondering, Superintendent, if you could talk a little bit about, I guess, accountability in regards to this. I, I mean, I think for me as a commissioner, not necessarily saying like this individual did X, Y, and Z, but I think like, what does it look like for the, the district to be accountable for the mistakes or the errors that were made? And how are we, I think, going about correcting them and how are we improving our systems that we're better, I guess, suited to kind of catch these things as they're kind of happening in process versus after the fact? Yeah. Yeah, I think I'll give two examples. I think one is there needs to be, I, I've started sharing some, but there really does need to be a full accounting of what happened and where did this go? Where did this go wrong? Right? So as an example, you know, giving that example, finding out that there was a recommendation around a staffing level that wasn't implemented, finding out more how that was communicated. And so we know we are facing budget issues, but I'm sure if anybody were asked, would you invest in this to, you know, this to, to avoid that? Everybody would have said yes. So how did that not get to? In this to, you know, this to, to avoid that, everybody would have said, yes. So how did that not get to? The, the, you know, enter into the conversation to be able to make a, a decision. And then, so kind of we need that full accounting of it. And then secondly, we need the, okay, what's, you know, I mean, you know. While I recognize some of these things happened while I was not here, while I'm here, what's, you know. Is being put in place to ensure that that doesn't happen again, right? So now, how do we, you know, how does the board know it's going to get the communication and needs when? Allocating resources for an implementation of, of something like this. So I think. Those are concrete examples of saying we need to present the full accounting of it. And then you need to see that, that the issues that are surfaced in that are addressed.
And I guess to follow up on that, when do you feel that members of the public will be able to kind of see kind of that full audit? And kind of be able to kind of have a fuller picture of kind of everything?
Yeah. So, you know, every time, I mean, we've had this discussion to some extent, you know, and we say we're focused on resolving the, the issue. But I mean, I will say I have started, I mean, myself looking into this. And as part of the, again, as part of the process of learning what to fix, we're seeing what the issues were. And I think I, I hear the need, the need for it. So let me consider what the timeline would be for that. So the next time you ask, I, I have an answer.
No, I really appreciate that. And I think another thing I think I'm just curious about is. I totally lost my thought, which means maybe I don't need to say it this moment, so I will step back.
Commissioner Shu. Yes, um, given that some comments were about not having enough notice of this meeting. In line with that, I'd like to know what is a more proactive communication plan about empower to. Broad constituency base. I know we as a board are being kept up to date relatively, but there are lots of other. Constituents in, within the SFUSD universe. There's parents, there's teachers, there's paras, there's. Just people who, who care about SFUSD. So how are we going to? How are you going to update everybody so that people don't still think, oh, it's still a mess, still a mess, even though we're making some good progress, right? But not everybody knows. So instead of just updating a dashboard, not, not everybody's going to come and look at the dashboard every other day.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, yeah. I mean, we've been doing the dashboard. We send out, send out messages to staff, sent out a community message. We're got appreciations for that message, but you know, and also some feedback about the, the challenges. I, I will say the conversation, you heard it was referenced. I did get to speak to a group of teachers yesterday from Lowell. Kind of out of that came two, I think two key strategies we need to implement. So one is. Is both sharing concise information and more information. Meaning like having upfront, you know, here's what happened this week. And then, hey, if you want to learn more, here's the explanation. So like I, I gave a pretty detailed explanation about the health benefits. And they appreciated, you know, hearing that and said that would be good to know, but you know, not everybody's going to read through everything. We also just want to know like, okay, the meeting's happening this day and this and that. And then secondly. I, I do think we need to find more, more forums for interaction. Not necessarily on the specific case issues, but on the overall progress and the general questions. Because it was helpful going through, like we went, we ended up going with an employee through a, a pay, a pay stub. And just that was illuminating to many of the people there. Cause you know, I, I was able to point out some things, information that they were asking for. So finding more of those, those types of engagements besides just the written updates. So those are two things that I think came out of yesterday that, that we need to do.
Those are good things, but they're reactive. The teachers demonstrated, they came and you answered.
Yeah, but now that's what I mean. So now that, rather than wait, like create forums for that. That's what, that's what.
How can we in general think about ways to be more proactive and, and even updating without people saying what's happening?
Right, yeah. No, so that's what I'm saying. Like rather than wait for people to come down, how are we going out and speaking about what, you know, what is, what's happening?
Can, can we sort of have a plan maybe next?
Yeah, so those are the strategies. So I need to put it together into a plan.
Commissioner Matomany, and then I'll also have one comment and then we will, no, go ahead. Oh, Commissioner Alexander, Matomany, Alexander, and then.
Well, first, I do want to say thank you to A and M. In the last several weeks as a board member, I feel like I'm finally getting. Updates that are comprehensive and root cause oriented and a scope and a timeline is being put forward. That said, I do share the, the ongoing concerns around accountability. Clarity around a timeline and also about just a, a truing up of an audit to make sure that we, what we have going forward is working. But also that our teachers and all those affected by the payroll system. Have confidence that from the beginning to, to the present, that they have been made whole. And that their, their paychecks have been corrected and have been reviewed. And so I also want to echo concerns about noticing. You know, special meetings, they don't have to be noticed. We have twenty-four hours. That said, as a courtesy both to board members and the public. I do agree that there should be notice and the presentation should be loaded and viewable. You know, I, I had not seen the presentation that, that you all saw in the public. I, I saw it for the first time alongside you. So we are working on that and I, I want to also underscore the work that we did as a board. Around our governance practices and our commitment on our end and ask that that be reciprocated by staff. And that we see clear steps to adhere to. To the, the handoff that took place in that, or I guess like the, the back and forth that is part of that. So, you know, I'm going to echo timeline. Clarity around accountability. Appreciated your comments superintendent and also commitment to a full review. I know we have to fix going forward, but a commitment, a clear commitment to a full review for all those that have been affected. Who may not even realize they've been affected.
I want to echo much of what, or maybe all of what Commissioner Matomany just said. And I think also just to say, and, and I think several public commentators brought up the issue of hiring more consultants. And I, you know, that's something that I'm really uncomfortable with. And as, as my colleague Commissioner Matomany just said, I think this is the first time we've started to see real progress. And so that's why I'm going to support this amendment, because I think A and M is finally getting us toward fixing this problem. The fact is, we have serious capacity issues in terms of our business operations in the district. And I think that's one of the things that's, that's come out of, you know, that was, that was a cause of this problem in the first place. And it's now very, very clear. And I just want to sort of say that publicly. And so like having A and M here is actually filling in. Capacity. So some of those vacant positions you saw, you know, A and M folks are, are on the ground doing the work. So that in this sense, they're not consulting in terms of just telling us what to do. They're actually doing the work. And so. So I think a part of this, that's what part of this contract is, is actually bringing, increasing our capacity to fix this problem. That being said, come April, we need to have the capacity to be able to actually run the system on our own and have a competent. Business operations end of our school district. And so I don't know superintendent Wayne, if you want to say anything about that, I just want to raise that as a, as a concern. Around this contract and ensure that when they, when A and M leaves, that we're, that we have a plan for being set up for success. Moving forward.
Yeah, I'll just say, yes, and, and when identifying one of our barriers, it was about the. You know, the technical term is lack of redundancy and, and, but, you know, meaning we need more staff, but actually like hiring staff. Who can do some, you know, hiring staff who can shadow the people who are doing what, what they, you know, the, all those tasks. So we have multiple people who can do those. And so we do need to start working on that hiring now. So by April. It's, you know, we're, we have it in, we have that in place.
I also want to make a couple of comments. I want to echo and support many of the remarks that have been expressed by my colleagues. One thing I want to particularly lift up. Times like five now is around the accountability piece, because that was the promise that. When we agreed to have bring A and M on, it is round stabilization. And now we are reaching, digging deeper into the root cause issues. And just tonight, thank you Erin, to you and your team, continuing to be much more. Deliberate and naming, you know, those root causes and what is most. Challenging and continues to be troubling is understanding the lack of business processes and systems internally. And you know, what are we going to do? And that's really led by our superintendent to put together what that plan looks like and how to implement that. I also want to acknowledge that the lack of business processes and systems is something that was highlighted to us. In the fiscal health report by FICMAP, as well as ongoing concerns from our fiscal experts. And to remind, acknowledge that this board is well aware, along with our superintendent, that we continue to be under state watch. Because of the vulnerabilities around our business practices and financial system. So it is absolutely going to be critical that this board will be. Working, looking towards that accountability and the timeline for Dr. Wayne to be bringing forward. So with that, do you have an additional comment? At this time, I'd like to. We had made a motion with a second with Dr. Wayne's amendments of, as recorded the amendment, Mr. Steele will call vote.
Okay, President Lam. Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Vice President Bogus?
Yes.
Commissioner Shu?
Yes.
Commissioner Matomany?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiseman Ward?
Yes.
President Lam?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
Thank you. I just want to, I appreciate, I know this, these are difficult decisions. You know, I'm presenting to you to have to, to have to make and you know, there, there's that commitment to. Both resolve these issues and, you know, follow up on the accountability piece. And just want to, so I want to appreciate you and, and do appreciate the partnership with A and M. And I want to just make a point to appreciate everyone in the command center. You heard me say we've have reassigned staff, you know, who, who. Didn't necessarily sign up to become case managers, but are, you know, working with employees and, and helping resolve issues. And that command center, you know, is, you know, just really a true partnership of. You know, district leadership and staff working with A and M. We have SAP members there as well. Even have, today we were hosting members from the city of San Francisco to, who might be able to support us. So I do, do see everyone coming together and showing that, recognizing we're in a state of emergency.
Thank you. We will now. Shift to our informational items tonight. Budget training. I'd like to ask my colleagues, we will. Sit here in the middle of the diets and I'd like to call upon A.J. Krabell from the Council of Great City Schools. So we will just take a few moments to get situated and we can get started.
Good evening again. I think. Great. Well, I do appreciate this, the second meeting in a row around the table because it's an opportunity to learn together and have discussion. Joining us at the table is Anne Marie Gordon, our interim head financial officer. And then we have with us A.J. Krabell from the Council of Great City Schools, as well as Elliot Duchesne from the California Department of National Case.
I'd like to ask the audience, if you would like to have side conversations, please go out into the lobby.
So this is the first to. Budget training, but the sections we're having. So, you know, the board's committed to working with the Council of Great City Schools on this process. And really followed through my commitment on updating our vision values, establishing the goals for student outcomes. And our garden rails. And then last time we talked about progress monitoring for student outcomes. And part of the process includes aligning our resources to support our goals. And so today's session is about. Learning from AJ and the discussion among us, what does that look like? He's worked with a lot of districts that have done this. And so what does that look like when we're aligning our resources to support our goal? Then we have a second workshop in February, which is really, okay, what does it look like? What resources do we have? Because that will be after the governor releases his initial budget. And then that will be more led by Anne Marie and I and Elliot. AJ will, you know, be here to keep us on track, but that'll be more on, you know, now taking the principles we learned tonight. What does that mean as we plan our budget now, when we have real numbers in front of us for twenty-three, twenty-four? So that, I'll turn it over to.
Wonderful being with you all again. And certainly, just as a bridge from the prior conversation. You all have a really tough situation with you and having watched other boards and governing teams. Go through tough situations, you all are managing it with composure. I appreciate seeing on. Online photos of you interacting with staff and trying to talk through situations. I appreciate the, the level of inquiry that the board is bringing to this. And the amount of time that you all are spending outside of board meetings to make sure that you understand what's actually happening. It's just, it is an impossible situation. You all are handling it as well as I've seen. Governance teams handle something of that nature. But this evening, we're here to talk about the budget process. I want to accomplish a couple of things with our time. One is give you an opportunity to think through the full budget process from today to the moment that you adopt your next budget. But then also I want to give you an opportunity to actually practice, you know, some questions and think through what type of things should I as an individual board member be thinking about? And asking about throughout this process and where in the process should I be thinking about and asking about those things? So that you leave here with some practical, hands-on ideas of what your role in this, kind of how you exert leadership, how you represent. The vision value to the community through this process. Fortunately, we also have some experts. So if you have expert level questions, I will defer, you know, to the appropriate individuals. First, the easiest question, and this will just be the frame for all of our time. When it comes time for the board to adopt the budget. What is the primary criteria that board should apply to determining whether or not they should adopt the budget? What, is it helping us meet our goals? That is the number one criteria that you should apply when determining whether or not to vote for the budget? Why should that be the number one criteria you should apply?
Because the money should follow the intent.
Yeah, the money should follow the intent. Why should that be the number one criteria you apply? It adopted goals for a reason, wasn't just for show. Yeah, why should that be the number one criteria the board applies? Adopted goals for a reason, wasn't just for show. Yeah. Why should that be the number one criteria the board applies?
Because we made a commitment to improving and focusing on student outcomes.
To whom did you make that commitment?
Ourselves and the S F U S D community.
Yeah, we made a commitment, you know, to our community and to ourselves and we're, there's a set of priorities. And we're going to focus in on those priorities about what our students should know and be able to do. This is the easiest thing to understand at the front of the process. But you will find it one of the harder things to accomplish throughout and at the end of the process. So just anticipate that this won't be the last time I ask, which sounds like an easy and obvious question. It's, it's one thing to say we stand on the shoulders of our community. And, and that we're marching in the direction of accomplishing the vision our community has for our children. It's another thing entirely to act on it. A large part of my role in a coaching capacity will be to constantly highlight any time where the behaviors you're demonstrating at the dais. From my perspective are materially deviating from the commitment that you've made, moving away from the direction of saying, here's what we want for our children. And, and we're aligning our resources with that. Anytime that your behavior starts to deviate from that, the reason you have me here is to constantly present you. To that deviation and to call you back to the things that you've committed to on behalf of the communities that you serve. So with that as our frame, let's dive into this process. Pretty much everything we're going to talk about is already in this document. So those of you who are meticulously literate, you've already sorted this out. But if you haven't had a chance to read the document yet, then this will be an opportunity for you to get some review. We'll walk through it step by step. Ask questions anytime. Starting where it says budget adoption, part one, board and superintendent plan for budgeting. So really, you've already completed the first step in the budget process. You've clarified for the superintendent what the priorities are. You said, these are the grounded in community's vision. Here are the goals for what students should know and be able to do, grounded in the community values. Here are the non-negotiable guardrails that have to be honored. So you've already completed the first, and for the board, the single most important step in the budget adoption process. What happens next is the superintendent's got homework to do. And actually, you just heard him speak to that. That he's going to have to analyze your financial picture and come back to you with some amount of assumptions around. Here's what we think our revenue picture is going to be. Here's what we think our expenditure picture is going to be. And ideally, you all will have a full conversation around that. I think we said, we're doing that when? Is that the January tenth? Or is that, is this February? Yeah, it's in February, that you'll have this full conversation. A large part of the intention around that is before you ever talk about an actual budget. There should be clarity for you as board members about what are the assumptions around what money, what resources are coming in? What are some assumptions around what type of expenses we're expecting to have? And that's, that's a critical thing to get clarity on that before you ever talk about what the budget's going to actually be. So that's step one in the budgeting process is the board says what the priorities are. The superintendent analyzes the landscape and says, here's what some of our assumptions are about revenue. Here's what some of our assumptions are about expenses. What questions do you have about part one of this process?
I'm just going to make an observation is that I, I have not seen us go through a process where we actually look at the, the buckets. And the assumptions. So this will, from, from what I've observed, will be a new approach. And so I'm not to jump ahead, but I'm assuming that when you're talking about the list of operational buckets and the projected expenditure amounts. We're also talking about. All, all revenue sources and expenditures.
That would be my recommendation. That's going to be constrained by what you actually have available. So for example, I know states where the State Department of Education. Got people projections about their resources extremely late. Well, then that means your superintendent will get you projections late. I know places where new legislation came in in the middle of the budget setting season, they created new constraints on the budget. You know, that, that popular thing that happens, the unfunded mandate, yeah, those things roll in at any time. And so they're certainly going to be things that you can't predict that are going to have impacts on just how useful. Those assumptions are about revenue expenses. So don't like write them down as if they're gospel, but it is helpful for, and the planning process to have been thoughtful about those things to the extent that you can be.
And there is an embedded timeline because the governor makes this proposal in January, there's a maybe five.
Yeah.
I guess the other question I have about sort of the timeline is, is. How this to how our timeline maps onto our school sites? And when they have the relevant information to be able to make really important decisions about programs and staffing. And, and I know that, you know, there was some questions with the maybe buys and there's money coming in, can it be used for the next school year? No. And maybe that was specific because we were dealing with some bigger budgetary concerns. But it just seems like all of this, we need to make sure that we know how it's landing on school site decisions.
Yeah, that is definitely not a part of the board's budget setting process, but that is definitely a part of. The superintendent's administrative cycle, working with staff and making sure not, and I'd say not only that staff have an understanding of what resources available to them. But also some amount of support around how best to deploy and utilize those. And I can think back to my last district. One of the things that we pushed for in the board's adopted theory of action was really trying to push more resources. To being decided on at the campus level. And so superintendent, you know, honoring our theory of action certainly pushed for that. And then we quickly found out that our principals lacked capacity around how to deploy the resources and how to do so in a way that was consistent. With the laws governing the different sources of those resources. And so all of a sudden we had Title I issues and we had. And so it's not only a matter that what he needs to do is talk to the staff about what resources they're getting, but also make sure that they have the support they need. To deploy those effectively as possible. That's, that's both a legal issue, but also a programmatic issue. That being said, none of that is part of the board's budgeting process, but it is something that you, he definitely has to handle. Yeah.
How, so how do we understand that? Because it seems like. If the board, if our approval is in June. Right? And the schools actually have to be given their budgets and make decisions prior to that. So how does this work with that kind of timeline? So if the board says in May or June, well, that we don't, this, this isn't aligned. But yet there's all kinds of other things that already happened.
That happens in every district in the land. Is it realistically, you are going to have schools that are already making plans? Your more clever principals are making plans right now, you know, about things that are going to happen next year. The, the reality is there's no way for your principals to be successful waiting on your current timeline. And so they're going to have to make assumptions, you know, and proceed. Usually, these things work out because your principals tend to be a clever group. They can read the goals and guardrails just so well as the superintendent can. But that being said, yes, you always run the risk that there are budgetary priorities that take place at final adoption. That don't perfectly echo planning that has happened at the campus side. And I have yet to see anyone come up with a reasonable approach to avoiding that. Other than, I guess potentially you all could create a budgetary process where you did final adoption in February and then that, that might preempt that.
Well, I guess to use a more specific example here, historically, we've had spent a really low percentage of our budget on classroom instruction, for example. So let's say that the board, to me, that seems like a board level kind of conversation around. Like I, one thing I want to know hypothetically is, okay, given our goals. You know, how much are we spending at sites to achieve those goals? How much are we sending centrally to achieve those goals? But if we've already made the decision, if this interview made around allocation between sites and central in March, how do we, how does that conversation occur?
Let me back up. There's one piece we missed. You're making a, an assumption that may or may not fit. Because the number one criteria that the board needs to consider is. Whether or not the budget aligns with accomplishment of the goals and then secondarily whether it aligns with honoring of the guardrails. Because that's the primary decision-making criteria. My coaching to you is to come in with a default assumption that the budget in fact is not aligned to accomplishment of the goals. And adherence to the guardrails. So this is, this is, often I'm saying, hey, you know, you hired the superintendent, you know, give them the benefit of the doubt. But this is in the budgeting process, this is actually one scenario where I actually coach boards in the opposite direction. My coaching to you is come in with the default assumption, you know what? I bet this budget is not in fact aligned to the community's vision of values. Superintendent staff, prove otherwise. And then it is on them to. Say, here's what we are recommending to spend the resources on and here's why. And here's why we believe that this is actually going to accomplish the goals. Your judgment of the budget is not in fact contingent on, is the superintendent using the strategy that you think makes the most sense. That is not the basis. The basis is, does the superintendent come forward with a strategy that is convincing that? The first priority for resource allocation is in fact accomplishment of the goals. And it should be a fairly high bar. You, you should not be automatically and easily convinced. But the standard is, as I look at this budget, has the superintendent made a compelling argument for how this allocation of resources? Will accomplish our goals, not has a superintendent identified a deployment of resources or a process for deployment. That is consistent with what I think is the best way to get that, to actually accomplish the goals.
Right, but I guess I wanted to say like, where does he get to hear that? Like I was giving examples, so I might ask, where does he get to hear that before June? I guess was my question.
So where does he get to hear what specifically?
So let me, let me try, let me, because that, because this is learning for everybody here. I've obviously done budgets for a district, but we're.
Yeah, slightly different process.
But let me, let me give you, here's what I'm thinking. Let me say it like this. So right now in the district, seventy-five percent of our expenditures go to schools. Twenty-five percent go our central office expenditures. Of the seventy-five percent that goes to schools, that number, that number is grounded in actual analysis. Of the seventy-five percent because of school, that's I'm going to make up a little. You know, eighty percent of that seventy-five percent is kind of set. So this is why I'm curious your response. You have to have classroom teachers, you have to have a custodian, you have, like, there's, there's things that are set. It's the twenty percent that the schools, you know, that's where they decide. And here there's a lot of authority and autonomy given to schools, like, do we want to do more class size? Do we want to hire more, you know, more coaches? Do we want to have more social workers? Things like that, right? That is going to happen over the next six months before we, you know, you know, before we. Before we make any big decisions to say like, hey, maybe we want to change how, you know, that, that's what to me, that seems like maybe a board level or my recommendation decision of like. Where do we want to have more autonomy or less autonomy in those decisions? Then on the same side of the district office, there's, you know, central office, of the twenty-five percent, there's same thing, like, we need a payroll department, as you know. And we need, you know, there are things, there's expenditures we need, but then there are things we do that could shift. And I will say, I say in this first year of budgeting, like, I, the, 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 because of how we do budgeting. There, it's just going to be the principals looking at our goals who are going to make those shifts themselves, because it's going to be too hard to. We're not going to be able to provide district direction and time for that. And then at the district level though, there's more, I think there's more say we have. And that's what I imagine the conversation happening in February when we're getting to specific dollars. So that's too much.
Yeah, so there, there's some of that I'd say absolutely, and a few particular nuggets, I'd say please absolutely not. Let's start with the please absolutely nots, because the rest of it was actually really spot on. So the things that I would strongly push back against is no, the board has already articulated its priorities. If there is a priority the board wanted around something else, then their opportunity to express that is. You know, through their goals and targets. So it's not like, well, these are the priorities except for all the other priorities we have. And so encouraging your board to contemplate having additional priorities above and beyond the priorities defeats the purpose of having priorities. So I want to be clear about that. This is, this is what I said when we started, that the hardest thing about having priorities isn't saying it. It's actually honoring it. And so you all have said there are this specific set of constraints that we place on the superintendent in the form of our goals and guardrails. Those are the priorities. So as you have additional priorities that you dream up, that is quite lovely. But those are not what you have articulated is the vision and values of the community. So there is one small caveat. One of the tool that we find that some boards take advantage of is something, is boards could adopt a special type of guardrail. That we refer to as a theory of action. And a theory of action certainly, you know, can provide. There's one more opportunity for the board to try to express the vision value to the community. And if that's something that makes sense, so for example, earned autonomy is an example of a theory of action. Some boards would adopt, and in that scenario, you clearly define, you know, that under these thresholds. These particular campuses get radically more autonomy and they can, and so you, that's the board expressing a means through which we move the envelope of decision-making. From central office to campus and back. But. With the exception of that as a special type of guardrail, that is something that we could certainly discuss. The role of the board in budget adoption is to ascertain the extent to which there is alignment. Between the goals and the guardrails that you've adopted, the priorities that you've stated and the budget. It is not the role of the board to come into the budget process looking for, here are the ways that I think things should happen. And here are additional priorities above and on the guardrails. As I told you, my task during these processes is your coach, we constantly present you to the things that you set of priorities. And call you back to them. So this, this is, this is why we have, you know, this training at the very front end of this before we've done anything else. Is to set some expectations about what does it look like to actually focus, be intensely focused on the priorities that we've set. We, we're talking right now about what happens before we even get into the budgetary process. And we've identified the board identified, says what the priorities are, the superintendent identifies assumptions, the superintendent. Ideally has done some amount of engagement with customers and staff. And developing some of that and should be able to relay some of that to you. Other questions, thoughts about part one, before we move on into the subsequent parts of the process? Part one is really about what happens before the planning. Now, it's, it's planning to plan essentially. Other questions or thoughts about part one? Yeah.
I had a question around our LCAP process and the role that it plays. Not to, you know, how do we lead with our vision values, goals and guardrails, the LCAP? And because we know that we must improve that process.
Yeah, so I don't see the LCAP as a governance document. I realize there might be people in your, you know, state department of education who disagree. If they do, I just think they're wrong. Because it's not a governance document, then it falls under every other plan that you all produce. And that it's delegated to the superintendent to produce that plan in a way that's consistent with the priorities that you've articulated. Your vision values, goals and guardrails, and that he should then come back to you and similarly be prepared to convince you. That the LCAP that he's prepared is in alignment with accomplishment of the goals and guardrails that you've defined. If you are not convinced, I would encourage you not to vote, to adopt it. But be clear, the only reason that you are voting on LCAP is not because it's a governance document. It is not, it's in my mind, it is very cut and dry, clearly designed as a management document. The only reason you're voting on is because that's the law of the land. And it's only it being the law that causes it to be a government stock raised to your level. If it wasn't the law, my encouragement to you would be, don't vote on it at all. Tell the superintendent to go do his job. And either he creates an LCAP that helps accomplish the goals and guardrails or, you know, in due course, he'll be looking for alternative employment. But you all will have to vote on that because that is the requirement. And so I'd encourage you to apply the exact same criteria. To what extent is this aligned with the goals and guardrails we adopted? As an aside, one of the things that's mentioned here in part one is that the superintendent, when putting together the budget, should do some amount of. Some of the basic assumptions around the budget should be doing some amount of checking in. He shouldn't be doing this in isolation. He should be checking in with, you know, customers and staff. I would say that's also similarly true of the LCAP, is that it's reasonable to check in with the superintendent as you were developing this. And what process did you go through that engaged with our customers, you know, our families, our students, what process? How did you include our staff and not just the staff in the building, but, you know, representation, you know, system wide? How did you engage with our staff in a way that gives you confidence that you have an understanding what's happening, not only in central office, but out in those campuses? Other thoughts about this first stage before we go to part two? So part two is pretty straightforward. The superintendent drafts the budget. Uh, reiterate that because it's easy to read the words, but let's, let's take them one by one. The superintendent. Then questions about who drafts the budget. Uh, and so there is always a temptation. There's always a temptation to violate this step and have board members actively. Uh, get involved and well, I'm, I was elected, so I should be drafting the budget. I encourage you against that temptation. This is, you know, a path that leads you away from the things that you profess. Uh, and toward a distribution of resources that does not, uh is less likely to honor uh your goals and your guardrails. So superintendent drafts the budget, uh they go out, they use a process, uh they uh engage folks and they. Um, and then they bring it back to you all. Uh, at that point, you all then start to have questions, you know, about it. But the main thing here is after all of the listening that the superintendent does, after all of the connection with it, with all staff. That he connects with, the superintendent will sit down and craft the budget. Questions about the superintendent drafting the budget? Questions about the board's role in drafting the budget?
We get to stand over the superintendent.
Hey, uh, yeah, Mike, could you, uh, could you move this over here for me? Yeah, that, that, that will be the temptation. But it's not, the, the critical thing here, it's not the board member's budget. What you all adopt needs to be the, you know, board, uh budget that represents, you know, the vision and value of the community as the board sees them. Not as individual board members see them. And so board members always want to put their thumbs on the scales of the budget. Uh, but that's actually a complete violation of what you claim to believe in. Partially equity, but in a whole nother level, democracy. Um, this isn't board members' individual budget, it's the board's budget. And so if the board as a whole, you know, wants to have a conversation uh about its priorities, that's always fair game. Uh, that will then wind up applying to the next budget, not this one. Uh, but it's always fair game for the board to say, you know what, I think we just picked the wrong priorities. Uh, but for this budget, superintendent will be implementing the priorities that you've already given them. If you want to change the priorities, that's fine, I'll move to the next budget. But that is the board's role in articulating. Uh, what should be prioritized in the budget is you adopt your goals and guardrails. Other questions about this idea that superintendent develops a budget? Superintendent, you know, drafts the budget, comes back to you all with the draft, and then at that point you start asking questions about it. Uh, again, I want to reiterate, the standard that I recommend to you. Is to come into the process with the default belief that, you know what, I bet this budget is not aligned with my community's vision. And my community's values as articulate in our goals and guardrails. It's on the superintendent uh to provide you evidence to convince you otherwise. And my coaching to you is not to be automatically convinced, uh to really use this as the occasion by which the superintendent. Is clearly spelling out for you and through you in public forum, the entire community, here is what the alignment looks like. Yeah.
I think I, this is what I was trying to get at earlier, and I think I didn't raise my question well, so I used an absolute example. That if this conversation is happening in June, I don't understand how it can have any impact on the budget plus. I think what I'm asking about is the timing of everything. So if the superintendent is presenting a budget. Uh huh. Two weeks, three weeks before it's, it's due, or even a month before it's due, we ask these questions, if the board says. We're not convinced, we don't have an option. And this is what I've seen every single year. Like, we, we did, we did this every. I think now we're set up to do it in a really thoughtful way.
Yeah.
But like, we're up against the wall in terms of the state requiring the budget to be approved by a certain deadline.
Yeah, so this is.
That's right, that's, I guess that's what I'm saying, how do we have as, I want to ask these questions early enough. So that he knows, so that it's not a setup for him too. I don't want to guess his budget, I want to be able to say, look, hey, I'm really skeptical about point X. Convince me otherwise, right? Allocation. So it's not that I want to be able to dictate the allocation, but I want to say, I'm coming in based on our guardrails, based on our goals, but the skepticism convinced me.
Yeah. Yeah, so this is why clearly articulated, you should start this process, three to five months of the. Uh, this whole conversation starts three to five months before the statutory deadline for adoption.
Actually, the, the documents is four to six months.
No, I'm not, so, no, for part one, um, for part one, it says three to five months. I'm, I'm actually reading it. All of the, the very last sentence of part one, all this generally takes place at least three to five months prior to budget adoption. And so that's what I'm saying, this whole process needs to start at least three to five months before you have, get around to adoption. Uh, because to your point, if you started any later than that, it's gonna be really, really hard uh for the board to have. A thorough conversation without feeling like we just have to press, press play because our backs are against the wall. And so that's why, again, part one, that minimum should start at least five months before adoption, which. Um, were essentially what we're doing this time around. Yeah.
Yeah, are we? I mean, I, I totally understand, and I saw the, the nods, what they're saying, so, but let me, let me, let me try this. But I'm imagining, I mean, this might be February, this might happen sometime in March, right, but. What, like, for, for, it to happen the way you just described in response to Commissioner Alexander's question, I feel like. In February, March, I need to say, I think, so I'm just saying this. There's a task that you don't know that you have, that, no, we, we talked about it a little, but like, you know, say. From looking at it right now, and let's just keep it at, you know, district office, right, we spend. Um, fifteen percent of our expenditures are on literacy. You know, we need to bump that up to twenty-five percent, it's gonna be, you know, and, and here's the big buckets of what those are, training. Um, adoption of an assessment.
Staffing.
And some staffing, you know? Then, yeah, but so that's not a budget, that's like, uh, I, I mean, it's a high level, like, here's where we're going, but that, that's when then. You're going from fifteen to twenty percent, that's not bold enough.
That'd actually be huge, actually, but.
And, and, and re, I don't, but that, like, because otherwise it's, it's, we're saying, here, here's the budget.
Yeah, so I, the ideal scenario is starting this as early as possible. And so to be perfectly in sync with what I'm describing here. And the conversation we'll be having in February ideally would happen in December or January. And then the follow-up, I mean, so yes, what I, what this document is contemplating is that you are nudging back your timeline just a little bit. So that it should be conceivably possible, you know, for the board to. Vote on the budget in, you know, April or May. Definitely don't recommend you waiting until June to do so, like the, in. Of all things being equal, earlier is in fact better uh in this scenario, but to your point to get there, that means you had to have started earlier and had those conversations. And it's hard to do that uh when you're up against the wall of when the state provides you data, but. Uh, uh, the, the, the other, the other way to do that is find other creative ways. To uh, you know, figure out how do we compress, you know, the timeline, or what are things that we can do earlier in the process? There's a certain amount of listening, you know, uh, your stakeholder engagement and such that uh can be done, you know, can be front loaded. It isn't in fact heavily dependent on the state deploying. It does require you to rethink this. The other massive rethinking that all this uh encourages. Is the normal way that school districts nationwide do budgeting, and it's not just y'all, this is all across, you know, with and breadth of the country. Is they do, they go back to the board and say, here's statutory bucket A, and here's how much money we reported there, and here's statutory bucket B. And these folks know what I'm talking about. I find that to be thoroughly worthless in terms of helping you understand the alignment of the budget to your priorities. And so what I am recommending in fact is completely distinct from that process. Will they still need to do that for statutory, you know, compliance reasons, you know, and for just operational uh purposes? Yes, they'll still need to do that. But talking about this is in this bucket and this is that bucket is not a proxy for. Here's how we're aligning our resources uh with our priorities. And so that's part of the challenge here is that. Uh, is it is two very different ways of looking at it. One from a financial systems implementation perspective, which is what you normally get. Which again, I find wholly inadequate to help you understand alignment to your priorities. What this is recommending is separate and apart from that, um, yes, which is additional work for your staff, is a look at your budget that. Uh, articulated from the perspective of your priorities. What are you thinking?
Um, I was gonna say that I think that the, what I'm imagining is, um. In prior years, when we've been able to have some conversations in January, February, before. Launching budget development, where what would need to change, I think, is the, like, the frame, um. To articulate the rationale behind, for example, school budgets, right? Here's the approach that the superintendent is recommending we take for how school budgets will be developed and allocated. Right, that there's like, and that, that is part of the articulation of the draft budget, um but then from there, there's a recognition that. Sites will be the decision makers after that point. And so there's sort of this comment, right, the front end of like. Does that allocation approach align with the goals and honor the guardrails? And then the recognition of then what that will look like when the budget is presented, where it's the, you know. The, the compilation of all of our school sites going through a school planning process and making decisions about. How they will, school by school, use those funds, so that, but having more of that conversation on the front end to really. Talk about the approach and the rationale of why this approach will address the goals would. Probably help with the questions that, right, that come throughout the spring as schools are planning.
What do you think?
Observation by pointing. And what you just said, it seems to me that. You're saying going from fifteen percent to twenty-five percent because we're skeptical. To me, actually, it should have been asking like our third grade literacy, right? Asking the teachers, what do you think it's gonna take? Is it gonna take one of you, two of you, three of you, five of you? To accomplish that for this school set, every school site, and then you get up and say, okay, five. Features here, and I have a hundred and twenty times five, just going, this, then you come up to a budget of. Hit heads, or whatever that number is, instead of saying twenty-five percent, and that comes to at the end, like. One per school set.
Yeah, I mean.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I do, well.
Of how to spend the money, it's like figuring out how much should be spent, should be budgeted.
Right, it's like the zero-based budgeting, we all know the zero-based budget, starting with the kids. And the people serving them and then building from the bottom up.
So ma- may I? You, you spent an extreme amount of time with this gentleman and a couple of his friends. Going through your visions, values, goals and guardrails. You've done the headwork on this. What you just said, and you'll excuse me, but it's, it's part of the how, not the what. Uh, your superintendent may decide that there's a better way to do it. You may not like it, you may get pushed back for it. And that's how you evaluate him, did he increase student outcomes? And, yeah, I want to kind of make this simple because the state's very complicated, but basically. It boils your LCAP down to eight priorities, and you can do almost anything under those eight priorities. Your goals that you developed, I guarantee you, provide a higher level. They're your top goals, and from those goals, that's where your superintendent should say, okay, literacy by third grade, what's the best way to do this? He's doing the what, he's doing the how, you've told him the what. And, and I understand that a best practice, maybe to go to the community, but. Technically, that's Dr. Wayne's job. I don't think I'm disagreeing with you, I think I'm actually reinforcing that.
Then, you know what? Anything that he proposes, he's gonna be able to justify in that way. And we're not gonna have anything to say about it. Yes, that's what I'm here.
I'm not saying you don't have discussions and you don't inform his management decisions, but you don't make them. There's a difference.
Let's kind of go back to what Lenny asked about the, the LCAP too, what I'm hearing. And what you described doesn't necessarily mean, I mean, uh, the way we describe it doesn't necessarily mean like. I, I did comment whether I would or would not bring forward fifteen percent to twenty-five percent. By time that I made that up in my head, or I talked to teachers, and you know, and I saw the nods from some people, I mean, better talk to some teacher, but that's where like, I feel like. I feel like the, the, I've heard three examples now of where the conversation on the budget, the skepticism comes as much from the. The guardrails as the goals, meaning like, you know, effective decision making, you know, so I was wondering, is the LCAP, is the LCAP a major decision? I mean, it's a major decision in that it's, you know, I know you're, what you're saying that it's a plan, but it is. It, it is something that's put before the board, that one of the big things that need to improve, whether we say it's a major decision on a budget, it's a major decision. Like, you know, so there's effective decision making, uh, there's resource allocation is a guard, uh, is a guard rail. And then there's like, you know, then there's serving the whole child is a guard, guard rail too. So you, you know, I would expect to be challenged to see, how are you putting in structures that meet our goal of literacy while also. Doing it a way that doesn't neglect the social and emotional development of students while doing that. Sometimes I worry these guardrails are a little big, but. But is that where, it seems like that's where, where the skepticism is, is, this is where they come and say that. Not the how, but more like, how are you living these guards?
Yeah, so the, the board is clearly articulated, here's the vision of the community, the results we have to give for children, here are the values of the community. The uh guardrails in which you have to pursue those. And this is why you have a copy of the goals and guardrails in front of you. If you don't have a copy on your screens, there's copies in the middle of the table. Um, but those are not optional, those are not recommendations, uh, those, those are not suggestions. Those, those are mandates on behalf of the community. Um, and so in alignment with any of your goals and any of your guardrails. Inquiry is fair game. What's not fair game is telling them, you know, well, you have to do it this way, you know, otherwise I won't be convinced. What is fair game is to say, hey, we expect meaningful consultation with parents and guardians and students. Um, before a major decision to make, how did you honor that guardrail and develop this? And either he can uh convince you that he honored it, or he can, and he's got homework to go do. Uh, but that's, that's on him, that's not on you to uh assume that he did that. You have every right to ask, um, what evidence do you have that this guardrail was honored in the creation of this budget? Um, but the limitation is. It's just what is specifically in the language of the goals and what is specifically in the language of guardrails. So for example, effective decision making. Uh, explicitly says parents, guardians, students and staff. It doesn't say anything about taxpayers. And so you could say, well, hold on, the taxpayers in this community have put in the bill for this budget, what'd you do to engage with them? Well, hold on, that's not what you said. And so is that a reasonable, is, is that reasonable? Sure, that, that sounds reasonable, but is that what you actually said? No, it is not. And so if I was here, it's like, hold on, folks, that is outside what you articulated as a priority to your superintendent, you said a priority. It, it may, maybe we need to modify to the future, but it's clearly not what you articulated here. And so that, that's, I, I appreciate that, because that's, that's a great example of the interaction between the goals and guardrails and his expected task.
And that's right, it's interesting to have, having this, this conversation that we focus on setting, you know, the interim guardrails as measurement, but this is a different. Approach to ensuring we're following the guardrail, which, which makes sense to me. I mean, in the end, I think what we're gonna debate. You gave a, a, an obvious example, but what we're gonna debate is, you know, what is meaningful consultation, right? Because, and, and what you're saying is, you don't get to say, meaningful consultation is, you had twenty town halls. And if you had nineteen, it wasn't. You know, so work, but, but, so somewhere between, they don't get to say that, so they don't get to believe everything I said.
Yeah.
And said, well, I consulted with people and I had five town halls and that was enough, and anybody who you're hearing complaints from, they just missed the memo.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be somewhere between there that we.
And, and the tension between those two is healthy governance practice. That's in, that's entirely helpful, it's, there, there is a tension between uh, between that, and that is, that is what this process is intending to elevate. Now, it is on the superintendent to offer you some interpretation. Would I, I interpret meaningful consultation to mean X, Y and Z. And we went out and we did X, Y and Z, and here's the evidence that we did X, Y and Z. And you look at it, and either he can demonstrate that he did X, Y and Z or not. Now, if the board as a whole says. Conducting X, Y and Z is not meaningful consult, no, no reasonable person would ever look at X, Y and Z and say it's meaningful consultation. That is a different con, that is a different conversation. At that point, what the board is saying is that the superintendent's interpretation is unreasonable. And that is an appropriate position for the board to take. Uh, there will always probably be one board member who thinks an interpretation is unreasonable, but that's not particularly. Uh there will always probably be one board member who thinks an interpretation is unreasonable, but that's not particularly relevant. What's relevant is the is there's a majority, right? He's gonna be that guy. But the the more relevant point is, does the majority of the board look at it, look at interpretation, say, you know what? A a reasonable person would get there. It's not, it's not the definition, I, it's not the interpretation I would use. You know, his interpretation was, you know, I sat down, you know, with the, you know, these thirty different constituent groups, you know, and walked through this conversation with each of them. Um you know, over the course of two months, and that's his definition of reasonable. And some of you are gonna say, well, that's just not reasonable. You need to do A, B, and C. But unless that's the majority of the board, then we keep it moving. And so, again, that tension is a healthy tension to have. Those are healthy conversations to have. Uh it's, you set the priorities. He's, you know, interpreting them, but he's now got to bring you evidence that he is actually following through um on his interpretation, you know, of your priorities, and that he's giving you evidence that suggests the reason we are um hiring five more literacy coaches, you know, for our lower elementary, is because here's the evidence that we have that that the unique need that our students furthest from educational justice are experiencing would be best met by having access to this group of professionals, and they're gonna be targeted to the places where students are furthest from educational justice. And and that, and that's his argument. And and it doesn't matter that you and your heart of hearts believe, well, what our kids really need is five people who do this job instead of that job. What matters is is that a reasonable interpretation of the board's goal? And is the evidence to you, uh did he brought any evidence that 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 is a reasonable uh course of action to take? And if so, at that point, um he, at that point, you have to be prepared to vote. What's critical about this, and I hope this is coming across in the conversation, the decision to vote on the budget is not a function of whether you like it or agree with it. That is, that is the hard thing I will be abundantly clear about. The decision of whether or not to uh vote to approve the budget is not a function of whether you like it, whether it's the strategies you'd pick, whether you agree with it. It's not that. The question is, has the superintendent evidenced that you should start off with the assumption he hasn't? Has the superintendent evidenced that the budget is in fact in alignment uh with accomplishment of your goals and is aligned with having honored your guardrails? What else is coming up for you? Yeah.
I I have, but I don't care. So this actually, because I think what Commissioner Sheu said about sort of grounding decisions in the folks that are doing this work and have the expertise that really resonated with me. Um I I also understand, you know, we're not too micromanage how dollars are being spent. And one of the things that I wonder if if to sort of make sure that we're honoring, like, how are we engaging with the experts in pedagogy? How are we engaging with the experts on the ground that are doing the teaching? It comes into the guardrail of effective decision-making. So if we're talking about how to increase if we're talking about, you know, in how money is gonna be spent in terms of increasing literacy rates, well then presumably, Superintendent Wayne, you are engaging with school sites and teachers about best ways to improve literacy. And oh, this would be this and this and this, and then that would inform the budget. So I I wonder if there's that sort of a through line is using the guardrail of effective decision-making, will not make major decisions without utilizing this process, da-da-da. And that, I think, gets to, I think, what at at least really resonated with me about what you said about making sure that we're we're listening to the folks that know how to do this best.
Um and to clarify, that is not the standard that you adopted.
Well, but there's a guardrail that says, without utilizing a process that includes meaningful consultation with da-da-da-da-da, and that includes parents, guardians, students, and staff will be impacted by those decisions.
That is the standard you adopted. I just wanted, yeah.
No, I'm saying I might, right. So so I, alright, I would hope that what what I'm saying, what she was saying, would would, it would look like talking to the people that we should be talking.
So he definitely needs to engage in meaningful consultation, you know, with these constituent groups that you all, you know, have described. You know, with the exception of adoption of, you know, and review of these things. Um and so certainly, having those conversations in advance of bringing you a budget uh is having those meaningful consultation uh discussions, but who specifically that is, what those conversations, you know, like, uh may not match your interpretation of, you know, well, he, you know, talked to the people at this school, but I asked the folks at this school, and they didn't get to talk to the superintendent about this. Um or maybe his definition of meaningful consultation um is he invited all the principals to, hey, principals, I want you to sit down with your entire teaching team, and I want you to go through these questions, and then I want you to uh start to bring some of that conversation, you know, back, and I'm gonna sit down with the principal. Uh and maybe that's his way of doing meaningful consultation. So then the teachers approach you and say, well, I never got to talk to the superintendent. Superintendent says, well, I I engage a meaningful consultation with the teachers through the auspices of their principal, and then here is, you know, the the results of that. Um and so all I'm suggesting is, I don't know how he's going to do that. Your investment uh isn't in how he did it. Your investment is, can he evidence that he did it? Um and that's gonna be, that's gonna be the challenge, is each of us, uh like, I do a lot of, I work with a lot of boards on uh constituent engagement. I have very specific ideas of um what my threshold for that is, and I find most superintendents coming under it, and I have to kind of nudge them up. But in the point that we get here, it's actually not my standard for what is meaningful consultation. It's the reasonable interpretation he's come up with. Now, if his interpretation is unreasonable, that's a different conversation. You're not, you're gonna find it's not an unreasonable one. It's just gonna be one you don't necessarily agree with. It doesn't match the interpretation you would have. But he's not gonna give you one that's unreasonable.
Well, but I think, I mean, I in some ways, you're you're offering, um I I I see I appreciate the line you're drawing. I mean, but what I appreciate more is, he said, we're gonna we're we're, we're gonna work that out. And and to me, what was the most encouraging is there's actually a space for a healthy conversation now. Because I say, if I didn't consult any teacher, uh you know, that probably is not a reasonable.
I bet, that's weird, but.
You know, but 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 what what you have given us permission, here's what I think doesn't happen. I think that there, I I think what you, you not only you've given us permission, the charge is to have the conversation within this framework, right? That what I am excited about is when I get challenged on meaningful consultation, is I think there's space for me to say, okay, right, you know, it it it, you know, looked like this, and here's why, and here's why it didn't look like that, you know, because uh because like, this is a controversial topic. So, I mean, you know, con- constant, you know, literacy, like, probably, like, there was consultation, you know, and I don't get into it, but basically, we get to start to say, here's what it looks like, this and that, and not me being defensive. Right, because often so much the posture becomes, right, that the board's saying, you should have done this, and the superintendent's saying, well, you know, no, I, but this was enough. But it's more like, what's our reasonable, what's our shared understanding of what is reasonable consultation? And and I just feel like it's just the the focus of the conversation, having this framework as opposed to just our
Yeah, and and that is, and that's the intention, is for that conversation to happen. Just ensuring that it's actually grounded in what the board has set as priorities, not things that are not what the board has set as priorities. This is really useful. Um, I had, were you trying to jump in here?
I did. So I, so what, when you were, um, what what does this look like? Because um President Lamb brought up the example of the LCAP, and so like, we're talking about all the things that this budget is going to be communicating to us. So what, what is it that we are actually going to be seeing? Because it has been, and it still is required, you know, some piece of it has to be documented in the LCAP, which you described as a managerial document, not a governance document. But presumably, there needs to be some documentation of what the goals are and what the activities and the through line of budget to those activities to meet those goals. Um the LCAP will is supposed to be at least some of that. So I guess like, what, what is it that we would be reacting to as a board? And at what time in that three to five month period?
So regarding the LCAP, it's still the exact same standards. You know, what have we set in our goals? What have we set in our guardrails? Um and it's still the exact same task. He has to go out and get it done in a way that honors your guardrails and a way, you know, that furthers your goals. And so it's it's the exact same conversation. It's just a different document.
But what is the but, because you you were like, I said, I mean, you, your response to the to the LCAP as a doc, a budget is a document that the board should be reviewing and voting on was really dismissive. So what is it that we should be voting on and reviewing that does satisfy all the things that it in here?
Uh the the LCAP is one, the budget is another, uh superintendent evaluation is another, board self-evaluation is another. There are gonna be a bunch of key decisions you all have to make every year. It's just a normal part of your operations. And for all of them, essentially, this same thought process of now, what is the priorities we've given to the superintendent? And then the superintendent communicating, what are some of the core assumptions behind that? The superintendent doing engagement um in a way that's consistent with your values, with the community's values, and then coming back to you with a product. Then you all evaluate that product against the goals and guardrails that you've set. And then once you're convinced that there is alignment, and your job is to crunch everything that he brings in front of you to ensure that it is in alignment with this community's vision and values. That that is a critical part of the governance function, is every single thing that comes in front of you. You were beating on it, beating on it, beating on it to figure out where is there not alignment here? And once you um are convinced it, once the superintendent has convinced you that alignment exists, then you vote on it. That's gonna come up in virtually every major decision you make every year that you're on the board. Um and it's just over and over, and it'll feel repetitive, you know, but you know, by the time you've done it multiple times.
Okay, I guess like, functionally, I'm still, I'm still a little bit perplexed, just functionally, because like, even what we talked about earlier, that, you know, the superintendent will share their assumptions about projected expenses and revenue. I mean, like, this talks about like including enrollment and expectations. So so are we anticipating, and you know, maybe this is the governance calendar, like, is the governance calendar then going to be aligned with all of these steps? And at the end of it, we get to the budget, because to Commissioner Alexander's point earlier, typically, what's happened is two weeks before a budget needs to be adopted, we get do you know, the first reading?
Yeah.
And so, and that's when all of a sudden, there's the unveiling of presumably the work that's been done. So so um so it's our responsibility as a board to be moving through a process that's gonna be informing us about the budget, and it's also the superintendent's responsibility to be and and the and the board, the calendar has to be reflective of the needs of the decision-making.
Yeah, so there there are two things about calendaring. Uh one is, up until this point, I think actually, ending in this month, I provided you all with a a board implementation timeline, and it articulated, hey, you should do this here, you should do this here, you should do this here. Uh and so now, my team and I are working on is, we're gonna revamp that thing and bring it back to you uh out over probably in the next eighteen-month period. Um and so we think that calendaring, uh being attitudal about how you spend your time is uh deeply important for governing teams. So we're gonna refresh that document and bring it back to you. You all will have to do whatever tweaks to it and then decide uh to adopt it, and then that will govern how my team supports you all going forward. And key things like budget are absolutely on that document. So that's one part of calendaring. A second part of calendaring that you can't do yet, but that will be critical and then eventually get folded in, is your monitoring calendar. The only reason you don't have that yet is because you don't have your interim goals and interim guardians yet. Once those are available, then uh the board, the superintendent's team will be able to analyze when data is available, you know, when are those assessments actually uh administered, and then when it's data back, and it has a chance to be cleaned and analyzed, and then provided to the board. Um so once we've got all the interims locked down, then you also have a board monitoring calendar that will go on the implementation timeline I give you as well. It'll be folded in. Uh but then you'll see, each month, here's the specific slices of our goals, here's specific slices of our guardrails that we'll be monitoring. And so there is a larger calendar that you absolutely don't have. Uh one, because we're just ending the last one that I gave you. And and so then I'll give you the next one, you have to adopt that one. And two, the monitoring portion of it, you just don't have, because you don't you, there's no way to have it until the interims are complete.
Okay, and and that is publicly available, would be publicly available?
All of these are public documents.
So then therefore, there's also, as far as being in service to the community, the community is aware of what we have committed to as far as what we're going to release and when.
Absolutely.
And so if those deadlines are missed or whatever.
If y'all don't do your job, people will know, and as well they should.
You, uh agreed. Okay, so this is helpful, because it was feeling very abstract, like, other than the LCAP.
Yeah, one of the great things about having a monitoring calendar is uh is some, eventually somebody will come to you, hey, you know, I heard you all were trying to do something about math. When, you know, how come you aren't talking about math this month? You should be able to pull up, copy a calendar. Well, we're not talking about math this month, because we're actually talking about literacy this month. We'll be talking about math next month. Why don't you join us for that board meeting? Um and so it's really great to have that monitoring calendar, because then you can articulate to folks, yeah. Not only are, we're not, it's not nebulous whether or not we're focused on the priorities. Here is in real time when we'll be focused on it, and we invite you to come out and join us for that.
And and when do you anticipate this?
So the monitoring calendar is at all times a function of the intervals. So the monitor, so so there's
When do we anticipate this?
Well, I mean, um, yeah, there, well, actually, we were just talking about this. I mean, we're gonna start monitoring. Um I mean, it started January, right? We have a January.
We'll do a, we'll do a test.
This year's practice, kind of. And then next year, next year is when we really
You'll you'll only have baseline data this year for a a number of these things, essentially.
Have like a calendar, a governance calendar in January?
Yeah.
Or because the interims will
Well, no, when will the interims be done?
Interms, yeah.
Um, yeah, January.
Okay, so then, uh usually after the interims are fin- are final, it usually takes them, you know, the following month that they have a calendar. So if the interims are final in January, I'd expect to have a calendar uh in February. Uh because it, because that's just a function of, you know, when is data made available? Um so yeah, if you, so that means, it sounds like as long as you um land on interims in January, you should have a monitoring calendar by February, um and then you start doing that. The first few months of that are just gonna be for practice. Um and I'll, uh whether I do it via Zoom or in person, uh we'll actually give you a sample monitoring report and we'll practice on it, uh so that you can just kind of start building the muscle. Um goal monitoring for the, at the governance level is significantly different than uh the type of progress monitoring that some of you have probably done in your other um positions. And so we'll take two or three months to just practice and get you up to speed. But then that'll also give the administration time to iterate through their first monitoring report. Will that be their last monitoring report? They're, they'll be on an iteration process as well. And so I would expect, you know, normally, you know, that's, you know, you know, four to six months down the road of finally having, this is the monitoring uh report format that we're gonna use consistently going forward. But there there is a lot of trial and error in the first few months of this, and it's, it's just the normal startup of this process.
It says, I was trying to clarify, because I can tell that we're, we're, we're being clear, the expectation, because where where you're talking about a monitoring calendar, I think you're talking more about a governance calendar. I have particular
No, we're talking about both.
Yeah, well, so like, so
I I've been calling it an implementation timeline.
Okay, but I guess like, you know, I mean, we, I've shared with you all, like, here's where I see the year year going. It's not finalized, but like, you know, that says, like, in March, you know, we're we're going to be talking about our literacy plan. Like, does that go, you know, so that's not necess- well, we actually are gonna talk about, we talked about this today, in the context of our monitoring report. Uh but then, let me give another example. I mean, we have the budget workshop in February. Um what's another? Oh, like, so like, we need to, you know, we we have the high school task force updates, right? Like, that's neither this, that that's, that that's, that's what I'm saying, like, a governance calendar laid out
Yeah.
the main topics of board meetings for the next six months.
And there's the monitoring calendar on yours.
And so, so so all, so all of those type of topics, I would put on the monitoring calendar. So when I, when I give you, you know, a sample monitoring calendar for your team to uh work on, you'll see that those type of things, you'll go on there. Uh so basically, the monitoring calendar is covering, here's what we're gonna spend board meeting time on. Um and the intention is, the majority of that is monitoring, but other activities that we'll be spending board meeting time on is in there as well. The implementation timeline that I put together has, what is the big picture of all of the different governance activities the board's engaged in, um including, for example, if you have ad-hocs that are doing work, you know, that'd be on that timeline as well. Yeah.
So just to affirm that the interim goals, because superintendent, you had not that the board approves them, but you had um presented them and gotten some engagement from them. So I think just to affirm that in January, you would be bringing those forward?
Yeah, so I present, and so I'm engaging with people right now, like, yeah, I have a superintendent fellows group, we were looking them over. And so, uh yeah, so then the idea was to show, here's updated changes I had from what I presented in In um. In uh, in October. And the, the hesitation you're getting, I was gonna, we were getting tuned to the weeds. By bringing that forward, the hesitation you hear is that. Uh, you know, that like we were just talking about for the interim goal of um literacy. We even had this talk in the, I don't know that by January, the, the. We're going to need to be talking in our literacy plan, what literacy assessments we're using, right? So if the, I know I'll have an interim goal on literacy and I'm going to talk about the benchmark, but our benchmark might evolve what we're using. When we actually get into the real monitoring of twenty-three, twenty-four. That's just where you're hearing the head, the, the hesitation.
Yeah, it's likely.
I'll bring it in January, but some of it still might change because we're developing literacy plans that might shift what, uh, you know, assessment we use. That's what I'll, that's, that's the.
And at this, and at this point in the process, that's entirely normal.
Okay.
Okay, so I just have a comment to that specifically, um. Hopefully, uh, our coach will check me, that's the main operations. But I do think as an example to that, that is really important to be able to um tie back. To even if it's. The plan, your assessments, to be very, to really signal then in the coming months for the following school year, what that is. Because I have the name in the community right now, there's a lot of. You know, excitement, anxiousness around actually the, the district. Delivering on those promises. Um, and then furthermore, that would also then be our, you know, our role. To inquire around that budget application. Because the assessments of getting towards that goal is going to be important, just as a. Alright. I guess what I'm trying to name is. I don't want to have another year go by.
Yep.
And as saying, oh, give us another year, we couldn't get it into the budget. And then that's a missed opportunity of another year of making progress for our earliest learners.
No, I, I totally hear that and this is exactly why about twenty minutes ago I was saying to help the. Because totally hear that and so that's, I mean, we're going to need to decide, make some decisions around either literacy practices or assessment. You want, then, then when I come and I'm going to say, here's what I could reasonably engage. Here's how I could reasonably engage in meaningful consultation in three months as opposed to twelve months. Like, so, because that's where I, I would be tempted to say, lock, because I, you know, the, the, that's where the. I, we need to make decisions, the temptation will be to put it off because we want to engage more and more people, but. Um, we'll find about, I'll come with something reasonable, but in three months, you know, it's going to, we need to decide these things.
And towards that though, is then your rationale and evidence around quote the trade-offs. I think being really explicit, right? That if we want to engage in a longer, what is reasonable, then this is the risk. And us being clear and communicating also with the public, because we're representatives of the community to what that trade-off will be.
Yeah, and that would be the board, the boards, if the board wants to say, we are owed this and we're owed it on this timeline. But given the trade-offs we've heard from you as a board, we're comfortable continuing to be in the dark from a data perspective for X number of months. That is a decision that is, is within the board's authority, you know, to essentially lend some clemency and say. You know, instead of coming back to us with this, which uh we should have in April, we understand that you want to take more time. We're comfortable not knowing about this thing until September, uh, the board, that, that, that. That, that is within the board's authority. Or, or not.
Yeah.
Or and to say, no, sir, in fact, get it done.
Yeah.
Uh, recognizing that there'll have to be uh edits and iterations later on, but get it done now. Uh, that's an entirely appropriate uh position for the board to take.
I'm, okay, I'm last struggle um is more for the moment, um venue. Because we're talking about the budget, it is the superintendent's creating the budget, responsible for the budget. Yet the, the venue continues to be the boardroom. For so much of the decision-making, whether it's literacy or budget, or I don't know, like any number of things. So what I'm um. What I'm seeking is some demonstrable or some demonstration where we have staff contacts. And the, and it's not just coming through the board when we don't direct staff and we don't work here full-time. And so, so it's great to have a governance. Calendar and monitoring that we, that we're doing as a board, because that is our responsibility, but it needs to go. In conjunction with clear ownership and ways to engage and get information. Um, from staff. And so, and I'm still. You know, I'm still waiting, we, we did the governance committee and I'm still waiting for the designees. And the, you know, the man, the management of what the concerns are and the monitoring.
What's the system for that?
This, the system and of getting our agendas out earlier, which was, is very much a part of the building trust. And so I'm feeling as a board member, increasing pressure to, because of. What we have done to, on our part, and I said this from the dais earlier, on our part. But the reciprocity is feeling slower than what I, I, as one board member. Um, had hoped for, even though there's progress being made. And so I just want to name that the pressure still lands on the board. Because that is how things have been historically and it's not changing noticeably from staff. You're still the designate for just about everything that I can think of, other than the command center.
I mean, I'll say, uh. Yeah, I, I hear that and I mean, that was going to be. I hear that and rather than invoking a state of emergency, I'll just follow up with more communication about where we are.
Well, well, hold on, that's not what I hear saying.
Whatever, I didn't, I misunderstood.
Where's staff? What, why are we still the point of contact for everything other than the command center? Like, when is it, if we're going to go through this budget process, I can't answer questions about literacy now, the high school task force. Any number of things that I get asked about every day. And I, and I don't know what the, what the, the, whatever the ledger or the, the system is. That was going to be developed from the governance camp, the calendar, we still are getting our agendas, you know. By, at five P M. the day before a special meeting, like, I just. We're still the most accessible.
Yeah, but that's where, uh, like, so, putting aside the, the agendas one is what I was invoking, you know, state of emergency. But when you're saying, it's like literacy, it, so I think I, I hear what you're, I, I think I hear what you're saying to some extent on. The, maybe the designated, but like literacy, I mean, you know, our head academic officer as, is meeting with. As a parents coalition, it's innovating public schools, it's not with parents for public, is meeting, is meeting, I mean. There are, you know, we're not expecting you to respond when you get the email around. Um, you know, what are you doing with the literacy plan, right? We, we have responses to that, that's where I'm not. Are you saying the response should be from, on the email that you see, it should be from Dr. Priestley, not from me? I mean, that.
I guess I'm just saying that as we go through this, this budgeting process, like, I, I am still grappling with. I am grappling with um. The, the partnership with staff, the visibility of staff. Um, and also just being aware of who are the staff designees that are leading various elements of these initiatives. That we can direct people to and who are providing us updates on a regular basis, you know, to goals or providing you. I mean, if it comes through you, that's totally fine, but it feels, it's still, it's feeling very ad hoc and. I mean, the governance thing, we were supposed to have staff designees. And there was elements of that in a system on the backend, and so I'm just wondering how that conjoins with this budgeting process. Because um it still feels like. It, it still feels very much the same.
Well, I wonder. I don't know if it's helpful, but I, I wonder how much this is connected to the reorganization. And kind of how central office and upper management is organized and because I think there's also this piece around. Again, thinking of the zero-based budgeting concept, right, there's what's happening at school sites and then there's like the central office and you have a report coming out. Um, next month, in the city around that, and I know you've been thinking about this, and so I don't know. I guess I, part of, I've been a little bit kind of like expecting that that was going to happen sooner too, but then it sounds like. Like this, this process is unfolding and I think there's, it's clear there need to be some shifts there.
So the, yeah.
Was that, but that, again, I don't, I guess that's where, one of my questions from a governance perspective is. Clearly that affects all of this, right? Like, we, we don't have a well-organized and well-staffed top management structure. That's, that's not loaded, that is competent, you know, all those things, I think, that we've talked about. It, it, it impacts all of this, but it's not directly. I sort of.
Yeah, so. Um, I generally, you know, encourage, you know, some amount of, you know, generosity and, you know, patience and. You know, recognition, there's a lot going on, uh, however, this is not one of those areas uh that I would encourage any of the. Um, the superintendent has, uh, by my recollection, I believe, given a timeline of deploying. All of those systems starting in January, that you're going to start experiencing um your um. For your regular meetings that you'll get information twelve days out. Um, that there'll be a system in place for um how constituents can. Express concerns and all those things, that there'll be a list of, you know, designees so that when people come to you. Uh, you'll have an idea of, of what is the navigator role that you can play of identifying them. Uh, my recollection is that the superintendent represented, you should have those things in January. I would not encourage um a whole lot of generosity in that timeline, like I think. Superintendent said, you can have those things for you in January, I think those things need to be provided to you in January. Um, and so I definitely appreciate, you know, your desire, your inclination to be patient. Uh, but, but on that, I would not, I would not be inclined to patience, only for exactly the reason you said. That if those things don't come online in January, you stay the frontline office, you know, ombudsman for the school system. And that is not helpful for your students, it's not helpful for your families. And so, and so if, if those don't materialize, um, I, I would surface that and I wouldn't be patient about it. Um, on a separate note, we intentionally. Made the agenda changes attached to your regular meetings, not all of your meetings. But I encourage you to consider uh reviewing that and do you want a separate standard? Uh, not the full standard that applies to your regular meeting, but maybe a slightly separate standard that applies to even meetings like this. So for example, I realize the law says twenty-four. I would encourage you to have a absolute minimum of seventy-two hours.
Mm-hmm.
Absolute minimum, and if there is some, um. The, the frequency with which there'll be something that can't sit for three days, it'll be. And that is very infrequent, uh, and, and so I, I do not recommend, um, you know, making your habit. Uh, twenty-four hours, even though that is a statutory uh limit. I'd recommend, you know, considering going back and saying, you know, for board bigs, we're going to put out the material for the boards. If it is, you know, something we have to do on a super tight turnaround, then at minimum, we'll make sure the board members have. You know, seventy-two hours, they have three days, so that you have material, so we intentionally did not attach anything like that. Um, to meetings like this, so even after January, this scenario could still come up. And so maybe that's something you all consider is making that modification. Uh, but if I was looking for an absolute minimum for all meetings, my minimum would recommendation would be seventy-two hours, um, even in the event of. Uh, things that are urgent, only in the event of if we don't do this twenty-five hours from now. You know, super bad things happen, uh. And if super bad things happen every twenty-five hours, more than a few times a year. That's a managerial, either really bad luck or managerial leadership.
I just want to jump in, I get, and I think the, the reason why we did that and I, and I'm hearing tonight this, we made a distinction because typically in this. Like this special session and the workshop was, uh. And like the workshops we did, like the student outcome workshop, there's not an action you need to take. But I, I mean, I think what you're speaking to is you needed to take an action that both you and the public have twenty-four hours to, to review.
Just read it.
We did, you know, so, yeah, so that's helpful, so. You know, we made the administrative decision to bring this now because we wanted to move forward with this. I, I'll, I'll reflect, could this, could this maybe, should this have waited to the thirteenth? Because even if it, even if it, uh, uh, even though that's not twelve days in advance, you would have gotten it on the Friday. Because, because our next board meeting is the thirteenth, but, you know, we're trying, you know, so again, I, I, that was a trade-off there that we haven't discussed. Uh, but I'm hearing, you know, even on special sessions, that I think the caveat I give, if it's an action item. That's the kind of advanced notice that's needed even for our special session or our workshop. If something gets tacked on, that's an action item like that, this was, this meeting was set up.
Was set a long time ago, without an action item.
Exactly, and then, you know, because we, in the state of emergency, we moved forward, it was an amendment tonight.
So we've, so part of the reason that we're even having this conversation is because. There are concerns, I think valid concerns, you know, just around what is the process going to look like? The process in your first year of implementing this work of saying, we're going to be rigorously focused on student outcomes. Is always rough, the first cycle, the first full cycle you go through it. The monitoring reports, you know, that whole process will be particularly painful for you and your staff, so just, just plan for that, like come in. You know, with the expectation, I think it was, you know, Buddhist theologian has said, all of human suffering is born of unmet expectations. Expect that this will be rough and that will hopefully minimize your experience of suffering around it. Uh, but thi- this, this is normal, in the first year, it's always rough with this. Um, and so that's what I hear, you know, some of Lanny's, you know, concerns around is, is this going to in fact get better? So some of the things that you're expecting are slated to come online in January. Uh, but I would be vigilant about ensuring that they in fact come online in January.
Building a record, so, I mean, I bring this, I bring this to you all because, like, out of support and love for the district. It's not, it's to build it, not to break it, and I want to do better by our students, we all want to do better by our students, but we have to be accountable. And we hear that loud and clear from, I, I'd say, one of the values that's not on here that, that. I hear loud and clear is accountability, like a real demand for, um, you know, a support for what we say. But a real demand for accountability around what we do, and so if we're going to change and come together as a board. It's, it's the doing that I'm most concerned about, not the saying. So.
Yes, just I think to build on that, so I think a little bit, at least from my experience, it, it, it feels like. There has been a lack of willingness to fully be transparent and communicate within the district. About why we make our decisions and the justifications for them. And a lot of things, at least to me, has felt like they've kind of standing up on like the expertise of the superintendent or their designees. Even when other logic isn't necessarily available for the conversation, and so I think. Going through this process will allow for that to be a little bit more transparency and explanation. I think one thing that always is struggle for me during um the budgeting process is. The different sites that reach out to us about things that happen to their budget, kind of near the end of the cycle. And they're trying to respond to it and how many schools feel isolated and targeted? When a lot of them are experiencing the exact same situation and there isn't any clear direction. From us as a district about why we're making these decisions, why we're impacting the school sites like that. And I think I'm really interested in how that shifts and really relating to like the convincing of the board part. Of really kind of making the clay, the, the, the case for why the path that the superintendent has kind of crafted is the right one. Because I think ultimately we might not all agree on it, but we can all at least, I think, fall back on the narrative, the story and what's going to be produced. And I also think part of what we're talking about here and. How I guess we, we recognize it is like, what does it look like to hold the superintendent accountable? What does it look like for us to ensure that they're doing all the things that we have set up and established for them to do? Separate from the budget cycle, so I think for us, if the budget vote in support or not is an evaluation of the superintendent. We've all failed, right? Like that is.
That's what I, that's what I was trying to say, I don't want to get to that.
Exactly, right?
Yeah.
It's like I think for us to checking out how we go into this new year, understanding the limitations that are still somewhat new superintendent has had. But also like the fire that we want to keep under his feet to keep achieving and producing and giving us the results that we want to see.
All of that. Uh, the point that you made, um, is part of that is that, uh, what I heard you say is a critical piece for this. That helps get at the accountability piece, it helps get at making sure the community has an experience of. How its representatives are holding the administration accountable, is the superintendent's role of convincing the board. Um, the, and again, the intention that you aren't coming in, uh, default convinced, you know, but part three in this process is. Um, the, and again, the intention that you aren't coming in, uh, default convinced, you know, but part three in this process is. You actually have to, the superintendent has to take on the proactive role of my board is by default, not convinced. And I can't go in and say, but I'm the guy, um, that instead the superintendent in fact has to bring forth. You know, something that shows here, here, here's what I interpret this to mean, and here's the evidence that I'm relying on that this is in fact. Uh, the way that we need to go in order to accomplish the needs. This is completely different. You will experience it differently, you'll experience it differently. This is completely different. Than how most budget process goes by boards. And I think that's part of why most boards across the country. Are uniformly dissatisfied with the budgetary process, cause at the end of it, I know that there are X dollars in bucket Y. But that's all I know. And that's deeply dissatisfactory. Um, and so that's. Uh, and so the, the, so the, that's why the third part of this is so critical. Is that the next layer of this is after the board has had time to engage in inquiry. The superintendent has to be able to deliver and say like, here's, here's the evidence, here's what I'm laying out, here's why we're going this way. The, another reason this is particularly important. Cause superintendent, all superintendents have to make really tough decisions and in a place with, what do you got, ten thousand employees? That, that means at any given time, you know, even if only one percent of your employees are dissatisfied with the superintendent's decision. That's a lot of people over there, you know, at the microphone. Even if only one percent of your staff is dissatisfied, there's a lot of people, you know, expressing frustration with that. And what you need as board members in order to, you know, be responsive, uh, to do your job as representing the vision of value to the community. Is you need to have something to say to them. It's like, no, actually, here is the rationale, um, that, um. Is what the superintendent is relying on, here's the evidence of, that is reasonable evidence to me. You know, fair, is that exactly what I would do if I was superintendent? No, probably not. But is that a reasonable approach and the superintendent has provided evidence of reasonable approach? Yeah, it is. And this is why we're going with it. You deserve to be able to have that conversation with your constituents. You shouldn't have to be bumbling around, trying to scratch up a. Justification for why you voted for the budget. You, you should already have that in hand. That's why it's critical that the superintendent needs to be. Put in the work and design the work around convincing the board that there is a libel.
And I just, just back to this thing around effective decision making, I think another indicator, if the superintendent has. Engaged in meaningful consultation, it's not that there will be nobody up there complaining, but it'll be minimized. Right? If he's done the kind of thing that, which she was talking about, right? You want teachers up there saying, wait a minute. We know what literacy looks like and the superintendent is proposing to do the opposite, right? That, that happens. To me, that's a piece of evidence that, that, that perhaps there was an issue with the meaningful consult, consultation. And so I think that's where. You know, just in terms of being, us being able to engage in this process, so that hopefully we don't arrive at that.
Yeah, um, I wouldn't, I personally wouldn't consider that meaningful evidence, evidence that there was a meaningful consultation. Is law, if the superintendent said, hey, I went out, you know, you know, I and my team went out, we did this listening. We heard these three visions for literacy. We're choosing this vision for literacy. You're going to hear people argue for this vision, this vision, and here's why we didn't choose. And, and so if people are mad, cause their, their vision for literacy wasn't chose, that's not problematic to me. If the superintendent knows that there are competing visions and can articulate why a particular vision was chosen over others. That's what I would, that's what it would take to convince me if I was still sitting in your seat.
I agree, and I think that that would also help people, cause I think that's what I hear is people feel like we're even consulting.
Were they, never had a voice?
Yeah, so I, and I think people are okay with that. Nobody expects us, I think people understand that. We're as decision makers, we're gonna make tough decisions sometimes. But I think the, the thing is we wanna be listened to.
Other reflections.
Also, I will say, and we also want the superintendent to bring forward his best thoughts based upon hearing all of those. Rather than all the options.
Yeah, uh, uh, but that's why, I mean, I, I'd read it as intentional that the guard rail is, well, meaningfully consults, right? It's not that we'll make a decision based on who said the most.
Will defer decision making authority to, yeah. And, and Lenny's point is also well made, is that. I, I think it's entirely reasonable for the superintendent to come back and say, here is, I heard this vision for literacy, I heard this vision for literacy. Here's why this is the one we're going with. Um, if the superintendent came back and said, I heard these three competing visions, what do y'all think? Uh, that is a failure of superintendent leadership. Exactly. I think you should divide your salary by seven. Uh, yes, did you have some?
I just said.
Yeah. So, so that, so that's the work. So what I wanted, the last thing I wanna do, so we've walked through the process, the last step is of course, you know, the board actually approves the budget. Um, and what, and board chair, you know, there's a special note for you in here. You know, is that I'd be actively listening for, you know, board members, is there anybody who has, you know, you know, evidence that. This budget does not address the goals and doesn't, you know, and it actively violates the guard rule. I, it's a reasonable. Thing for the board chair to check in on. Um. And, but if, if nobody has evidence of that, you know, there's like people know, there's, there's a reasonable interpretation and there's evidence to back it up. You know, it's not the one I picked, but it is there, you know, then at that point, we're good, we're good to go. Uh, but if somebody has, no, it is very clear, you know, that we have said that. Um, we have to have meaningful government consultation, you know, with staff. And there is no evidence that's been provided to us that any staff, you know, uh, were, were engaged in meaningful consultation. So no, I'm not ready to vote on this. Then as a board chair, you're like, okay, so what you got? Uh, uh, if there's kind of hesitation around that, uh, really, at that point, it comes down to. Is there a board majority that feels like the superintendent has not provided? Uh, evidence, you know, their reasonable interpretation. And if there is, then I think you gotta push back. If it's one, two, or even three people, I say the, I say proceed. Um, ideally, it's, it's really great to have seven, uh, that, that's, that's a good day. Um. And if there's a path, you know, maybe spend some time pursuing it. But if this is gonna require, you know, we. You know, we need to have a wholesale redesign because somebody is dissatisfied, I say keep it moving. So that's the whole process. Before we, um, let this topic go. I wanna invite you to, uh, take a moment and write down, imagine that you have the budget in front of you. Um, all of you have kind of lived through the budget cycles, even if not as board members. Imagine you have the budget in front of you. What's one question that you think you might ask? And I wanna throw some actual questions on the table and just see if they're calibrated. Um, and you know, do some work with, uh, potentially massaging them as needed. So everybody just take a few moments and whether on paper or on your device. Write downs between one and three possible questions that you might wanna ask when the budget is in your hands. Take a few moments and write down between one and three questions that you might actually wanna ask. When the budget is in your hands. And give you a few moments to write down some of your potential questions. Um, and then we'll dive into some of them to, uh, to see, um, how well calibrated they are to the process we just walked through. Alright, some folks who still type it away, that's great. Keep doing that. What I would encourage you, uh, we won't get to all of your questions, obviously, uh. Cause I gotta go, I have something to eat at some point. Um, but, uh, we'll get to several of your questions. Any questions we don't get to? By invitation, feel free to email them to me and then we can debrief about them, uh, offline. So who will toss out the first question? Uh, what's an example of a question, uh, you might ask?
Okay, I feel like I asked this last budget cycle, but, um, and maybe this is a little presumptive, but. Uh, how will these budget reductions affect our ability to fully serve students?
Alright, how will these budget reductions affect our ability to fully serve students, did I hear correctly?
Yeah.
Alright, board members, um, to what degree is that, uh, inquiry aligned with the process?
Yeah, I don't think it's aligned with our questions around the goals that we set.
Okay, don't think it's particularly aligned directly to the goals. Yeah, what do you think?
What I was gonna say, I think it could be, if maybe it was. Um, like I was thinking of one, like, let's, let's say there were cuts, right? And to say something like, you know. The, tell me how these cuts. Create allocations that are baseline sufficient to operate all school while addressing equitable inputs and creating more equity and excellence. Yeah, so, so like linking it directly to the guardrail, basically asking that question, but linking it directly to the guardrail.
Yes, ab- absolutely spot on. Um, is that the question itself is a little bit broad. And the, and the way to really bring it home is to link it directly to one of your goals of guardrails, is that the inquiry isn't kind of generic. It is really specific to one of your community's vision and values that you codified. And so the thing to do is connect that question directly. Uh, to that, um, I really wanna know, you know, as we make these cuts, what impact is that gonna have, uh, on. Curriculum instruction, uh, that's actually rooted in excellence. Uh, I hear you saying we're going to, um, let go the entire curriculum instruction department. How will making that decision in the budget, uh, allow us to have curriculum instruction rooted in excellence? That to me is a very reasonable question to ask. Um, but, um, it's reasonable because it is directly grounded in. Uh, the vision of values and your communities articulated and you codify. Uh, thank you, by the way, I always appreciate folks who go first. So thank you for going up the first question. Who will offer up the next question? Yeah.
Um, how and where does this budget allocation X support goal one, two, or three?
So, so what do you all think? Is that aligned or not aligned? So, why, why do you say aligned?
Cause it reflects, um, the board's goals and the question.
Yeah, and any other thoughts on this? Yeah, uh, the, the thing I would nudge for you to get the maximum of value for your inquiry. Is I take it one goal at a time. Yeah, so I wouldn't ask that question about all three. Let's say, okay, let's, let's start with goal one.
Can I ask, because I, I wanted, the reason I, cause I actually went back and forth on that in my head, and I was thinking that. It may be that the budget allocation is specific to just one of them. And so by asking about, uh, okay, this allocation. Dr. Wayne could say, oh yes, this is for, this relates to college and career readiness.
Oh, I see the question you're asking. Yes, absolutely. That makes perfect sense. Uh, I, I was thinking about the question differently in my head. I see what you're asking. Yeah, that makes perfect sense. Uh, did you wanna jump in here?
Kind of tagging on that, had, I had written that same thing, but as I was putting the question together. I wanted to insert the progress piece. Um, because if we look at the highest level, we chose to, you know, choose universal goals. But when we look at the interim goals, even though we don't approve them. The progression is really important, like the end of year kinder readiness, for example. And so I wanted to insert something about the progression. How do you, you know, how is this budget resources funding? Delivering on a progression of goals?
Do you have any interim goals in that case?
Could we name on the intervals? Can we, is that?
Yeah, interim goals are gonna be fair, you know, game in this conversation.
Okay, so interim goals and interim guardrails be fair game in this conversation. Great, cause I think for me, that's a, another thing can I raise a theme right tonight? Is that I don't want us to like blink three years down the road and they're like, oh, well, actually, we weren't monitoring the budget investment. They're going into interons and now we're gonna, you know, we've kind of missed an opportunity.
Yes.
I can, I, I, I can hear this question being asked, being curious.
Yeah.
But, uh, uh, the way you seem to be setting this up, this seems likely to be a legitimate question. Um, you know, as it comes forward, there's a public comment. And how, uh, you know, how does the fact that this school needed to reduce this staff member? Who's working with this small group of students for literacy meet our goal of third grade leaders?
Yeah, so one of the distinctions that we haven't talked about yet, and that we'll get into, um, we're scheduled to get into. We're doing practice monitoring in January tenth. So we'll get into this in January tenth. We're gonna do a project, a practice monitoring session. And one of the pre-read materials that you receive for that is a document labeled technical, tactical, strategic. And what it's looking at is what's the difference between questions that are of a technical nature? Questions of a tactical nature and questions of a strategic nature. Get of those three, guess which ones goal setting conversations be based on? Yeah, this is a strategic conversation. And so.
Same for budget conversations.
That's what we're talking about, for budget. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, I meant for budget, uh, for budget sake, conversation, this should be a strategic conversation. Um, by the way, for goal setting, is it also be a strategic conversation? Uh, for superintendent evaluation, it's, you know, this, the board governance operates the level of strategy. Uh, there is some amount of technical information and tactical information that's helpful for you to have. Uh, but as you'll see. Um, my coaching to the board, uh, whoever is facilitating a monitoring session is. Um, brand new technical and tactical conversations at the days should be, you know, ruled out of order. Like, actually, that's really good question. Uh, I hear you wanted that question about this particular teacher, this particular school. That's not really strategic, that's a tactical question. Uh, superintendent, can you get that to us, you know, in the next update? Um, and then you move on to the next one. But you don't, uh, deal with out of the blue, uh, you know, with rare exceptions. You don't deal with out of the blue technical and tactical questions at the dance. And so generally what I coach board members to do. Is when you have technical and tactical questions, technical questions, how are things measured? Uh, and I'll go ahead and send this document out to you all, uh, now, so that, uh, you'll have it, you know, in advance of January. Uh, but technical questions are really around what's, how the measurement of things, how do we know that this is a valid measure? Uh, what percent of students were actually assessed on this? Like, is this representing awesome? Those are technical questions. Tactical questions is about how are staff people doing things? How are individual classrooms, individual schools doing things? Uh, those are, you know, the tactics of the school system. Strategic is really around, what is our approach at the system, uh, at the level of the school system? You know, for, uh, accomplishing, um, you know, whatever it is we try to accomplish. And so those type of questions will come up. Uh, but because it's a, that specific one is clearly, clearly a tactical question. And not a strategic one. Uh, the director, the correct response from whoever's facilitating the meeting in that moment, which in the case of the budget, probably certainly gonna be board chair. Should be, great question. It's a, it's more of a tactical question by the superintendent to, uh. You know, get us a appropriate answer in the next, uh, Friday update that they send out, uh, who has the next question? And then you, and then you just move on. Uh, the, the coaching for board members, so if you have technical and tactical questions, ask them before the meeting. Like if knowing the percentage of students who were assessed by this particular assessment is critical to your understanding of it. Then I've actually done your job, you're almost gonna ask in advance. That's part of why I'm so hardcore on a minimum of seventy-two hours. That's also why I'm so hardcore on getting your stuff twelve days in advance, is cause realistically, you're gonna need that twelve days. Realistically, you're gonna need that in order to get your technical and tactical question in advance. That's part of the reason I push that so hard. And superintendents look at me like, why are we doing this? That's part of the reason, so you can ask those questions in advance, so that at the days, you can be focused on strategic. I appreciate that inquiry. Uh, we're gonna pass that on to the superintendent and we're gonna keep it moving. What question do you have?
I have a question that, uh, some of these tactical and technical questions, maybe the public wanna know too.
Yes, and the answers to all of the questions that you ask in advance. In accordance with the policies you do adopt, it will be put on a document that is publicly posted to the minutes. Or publicly posted to the board agenda. And so all of the questions that you ask, technical, tactical or strategic. And all the answers the superintendent provide will all be provided in writing. Uh, it is absolutely, it is not appropriate to have an untransparent approach, uh, to, to these conversations. Uh, but frankly, having a PDF that people can uh search through is gonna be a whole lot easier, more transparent for. Uh, most of your users than having to go back and listen to your entire meeting to try to figure out where the answer was uh offered. Uh, it'll be a much better user experience. Um, the boards that have shifted to this, they don't go back. It's like, yeah, we're not, we're not doing it the old way anymore. This is a much better experience for our staff. It's a much better experience for, for our families. Um, and so, yeah, it has to be transparent. That's what you accomplish. You take all the questions that were asked in advance, all the answers that were given in advance. Put them in a document, attach it to the agenda. Now, anybody who wants to know all of that inquiry that took place, now I have access to it.
And translate it.
And, and then, yeah, uh, then you've got to make decisions around how, not whether it's frankly, but you know, how many languages you get answers. Uh, let's get one more question out here. Who's, who's got a question? Yeah.
Um, how did you meaningfully engage the stakeholders outlined in one of our guardrails to help you can come to the decisions you've made? Concerning budget allocations aligned to achieve the board's goals for student outcomes.
Yeah, um, and I think you could even be specific. Uh, how did you, what did your meaningful engagement look like relatively goal number one?
So can I, can I just ask another question though? Cause I wasn't sure how to frame it, cause my, were, I had a couple of questions and they were around like, what have you? What is, what have we expanded, reduced, or eliminated? And how will those choices positively impact students' learning? And then how was zero-based budgeting utilized to ensure maximized alignment to our goals?
So I've got a, even though coaches aren't supposed to have favorites, my favorite is always the person who did the prepping. Uh, and so all the questions that we just uh offered are in fact in the prepping document that we've been going through. Um, and these are absolutely strategic level questions that I would encourage you uh to ask about.
But would you frame those like generally, or I mean, cause we, we're being directed towards specific goals, or I mean, these, but these are generally.
So you could, you could in fact ask them generally. What I'm suggesting, and that's not out of line, what I'm suggesting to you is you will. It will give you more clarity to ask them specifically, uh, uh, because then you'll get a more specific answer. So for example, you say, hey, how did we? You know, what things have we, uh, what strategies have we identified that haven't worked uh to accomplish goal one? Uh, you know, that we're walking away from. Um, that's, you're gonna get a meaningfully different answer than. What are strategies that haven't worked to accomplish our goals that we're walking away from? Um, and so both of those are perfectly legitimate questions. All I'm suggesting is, generally speaking. You usually have one particular kind of goal or guardrail in mind, and so just feel free to be specific on one particular if you want. Uh, but yeah, questions about, um, you know, you know, how are they, you know, kind of what evidence do we have, you know, that, you know? But the investment is actually, you know, helping us accomplish the goals, you know, relative to our goals, you know, what strategies? Are you adding to accomplish goal one? What strategies are being continued? What strategies are being abandoned? Uh, because they're not helping us accomplish goal one? What are they being replaced with? Like, all of these are appropriate strategic levels, you know, inquiry to be engaging in. Uh, and then the last one that you asked, all the way. Uh, let's see where it's at. Or search for zero.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it's in the board superintendent convinces the board section, um, is. The advocacy for the very first time you go through this process, um, having golden guardrails in hand. We do encourage that you consider zero-based approach uh for the budgeting, only because. The accumulated inertia of expenditures um is a powerful drain on strategic, strategic intention. Um, and so considering a zero-based approach, I, I don't actually recommend a zero-based approach every single year. Uh, but at minimum, the, uh, in the first couple of years that you adopted a bit of gold and guardrails.
Can I hear a response on that? Because we've, there was an intention to do that two years ago. And there was staff basically said we didn't have the capacity to do it. So I'm curious if. I mean, appreciate that, but I, I do not see that happening in these first two years. And we have, yeah, she's doing an amazing job. We have an interim, you know, head financial officer. We have, uh. You know, half the budget staff and staff and, you know, reassigned to the command center, right? Like, you know. Yeah, so I don't know. If it didn't happen two years ago, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, definitely not gonna happen.
It certainly makes, it certainly makes sense to me that that's not on offer, you know, for the coming budget cycle. Like if, if the team isn't already on the ground and hasn't already begun that approach already at this point. Then it doesn't surprise me that's not an offer for this budget cycle, but.
Uh, so I think that means we're gonna be confronted with a budget that doesn't align.
True.
And so maybe it's a question of like, how aligned is it? Cause I just wanna be real, like I don't, again, I don't, especially with the public too, like I don't think we can go into sell, we're gonna align our budget to our priorities. If we don't do, I would, I don't think, if I think if we don't do zero-based budgeting, we will not accomplish that.
And, and again, I'm, I've shared that.
Not cool. I, I understand that we may need to wait here.
Uh, so, so one thing to think about, and this is advocacy for our documented coming direction, is that what you're. What the, the minimum that you're always looking for in processes like this is, is you're looking for trajectory. So you're not, you're not necessarily looking for, did we jump from? The, you know, present state to the idealized future state. What you're often asking is, did we make a move in the direction? So maybe it's not, are we going from fifty percent of our budget to focus on goal one? To fifty percent? Are we going from fifteen percent, you know, to seventeen percent? Um, you know, is the trajectory uh aligned? And so that's the case. The, the, but the second thing I'd say to that is. I generally agree with you, you know, that if you don't. Uh, make something like that happen as soon as possible, you are going to be. Your, your budget will continue to be weighed down by things that are making it harder for you to, you know, access, you know, the goals. Um, and so. Uh, that is not a decision I consider for the board debate. I think it is a decision for the superintendent to make. Um, but the, the thing that I think you have to look at is how much alignment can I actually deliver this board? Without taking that approach and let it drive, how, how, how far off can I, you know, push that? Um, without doing irreparable damage to our long-term capacity to execute. Uh, but the fact that it's not, you know, on offer this year, that is not surprising. Um, because folks are already like thinking about it and already moving in a direction. Like, you were late for this year, but next year, preferably, the year after, um. I, ideally sometimes so, but just the accumulated kind of depth of this past budgets will haunt future budgets if you don't address it.
Yeah, no, you're, I, um. I can't promise that this won't be the situation that we're in in a year, but I do think that. Our multiple attempts at zero-based budgeting were. Extremely tested and challenged by the fact that we were doing it in order to make really drastic reductions. That I think that it's easier to go through a zero-based budgeting process when everyone, because. Everyone wants to protect.
Yeah.
Right? And so everyone is gonna say that everything they do is core and base. If they know that saying otherwise means it's probably getting cut. And so I, you know, I can't promise that in a year. We won't have, be in a situation where we aren't thinking about what might need to happen to balance our budget, but. My hope, I would say, is that if we were gonna pursue it and, and real, and talk about what it would look like to commit to that approach. That I would hope it might not be in such, such a dire circumstance. Because that really is, I think that is a really big. That really informed how people approached the process and made it much more challenging to like. Take a step back and try to pursue like a true zero-based approach, um. For, for this upcoming, like for twenty-three, twenty-four, um. And we haven't talked about this, but some of what is coming to mind for me and how do we make forward progress in articulating what we currently. Do and how it aligns to the goals and guard and, and honors the goals is really pushing to articulate. And orient our current state to the golden guardrails, right? Say like to contextualize it, um, because I also would say that. Unless we're expecting, or like unless the expectation is that there is really drastic change in six months, then we wouldn't, that right? That like, that's, that's what like to be ready for that, a zero-based budgeting approach for the potential of really. Like, I just imagine there would be a lot of change or the, the potential for a lot of change, and if, if we aren't ready for six months from now. Really drastic changes, then the, the place to start is by articulating. Right? As a school goes through a school planning process, or as a department goes through its budget development process, to think about. What am I currently doing and how is our work cur- currently organized in, you know, in the context of the goals and guardrails?
I have thoughts on lots of things. I don't, I, I don't mention them all. Uh, actually, I think one of your guardrails is very important here, and that's resource allocation and the superintendent. Will not allow resources to be allocated without transparency. You can read them, but. I think in public education, when you approach zero-based budgeting. You have to start first with what are the parameters you cannot change. You have to have, in your case, two percent budget. You have to have money to routine maintenance. You have to put money in the deferred maintenance. So you have to have, you have certain statutory things, but I think it's very important. Cause what I did not hear when you went through that process last year is these are the givens. We have to do this. We have to have, you know, less than twenty-one point three seven. I have the number wrong. Teachers on an average on TK through three for our class size reduction. So. If you, you can't start from zero, zero, but zero is your base and then you have discretionary on top of.
Zeroish.
Zero, but I, I think the concept's good because zero has to include the givens.
The rocks you can hear.
Yeah, rocks you can't move. I like that.
Yeah, what do you think?
Just one thing I think to add in regards to the zero-based budgeting, I think is approach, I think the thing that I was most interested in seeing. The most reason I was most interested in seeing us pursue it when we were, was really about how do we get more consistency in the community about what's gonna happen? If there are reductions, how is there a clear understanding of how our priorities are reflected in our budget and the decisions that are made? So I think for me, and I feel like a lot of other people, when they see some of the budget decisions, they seem to go directly. Um, in contradiction to what we're trying to do and accomplish, and that circle is kind of never kind of fully closed to kind of explain how. This thing that obviously seems to reduce our capabilities to serve people is helping us reach an objective or how it isn't and how we have to do it for other reasons. And so I think even if we're not able to fully kind of get the zero-based budgeting piece up. Figuring out for me the, the area around the transparency, the consistency, the way people can expect for certain things to kind of happen based off. How we're prioritizing and just deciding on things versus, I guess, what it ultimately seems like. The board will have the last say in the final decisions and how things are allocated. Um, versus it being a kind of a more collective decision about what's best for the district as a whole.
The only thing that I'll, you know, add on this conversation before we pivot away from it is, um, obviously in the document. Uh, I'm offering direct encouragement to superintendent to consider something of this nature. Part of why I included it in the document, because normally I don't put a lot of managerial device, advice in these documents. The part of the reason I did put it is because it is a very hard, um, it's a very hard thing to do. Uh, and so I intentionally put it in there, you know, just to offer some about cover, you know, to superintendent to choose to go that direction. That being said, that is a, uh, I guess it'd like to be a managerial decision, you know, unless you have a guardrail about it. Uh, I guess it'd have to be a managerial decision, um, uh, and if he can find a way to have constantly generate. Increased amounts of alignment each year without doing that, then more power to you.
Um, you know, to start achieving the goals. Yeah, cause we spoke about radical change. I mean, we, board has actually demanded radical change. Yeah, in terms of the outcomes.
That's right.
So maybe it's possible to do that with non-radical change of the budget. I'm just.
Yeah, that, that, it's on him, um, and, and he'll, and he'll look at it, you know, figure it out. So actually. Your team, I don't know if we can get there without doing X, Y, Z, then he'll figure it out. If he says, I think we can get there without doing X, Y, Z, I think it's safe. We need to do, you know, L and O P, then I'll go do that instead. Uh, anybody else have a question that you were just dying to test before we wrap this thing up? If anyone had a question, you just, I just really wanna see where we go with this thing. Anybody else?
Um, I guess, can I just, when we were just talking right now, I was just thinking about, um. You know, how we measure impact and efficacy. So I mean, there's the interim goals and all this, but like, that's one thing that doesn't. Uh, like that it, it hasn't been baked in as a way to just inform how things are working. Um, you know, which students are being served, how are they being served, that kind of thing. And so when it comes to zero-based budgeting. Or, or just even a review of what we're gonna increase or expand or reduce. Um, that's a wonder that I have.
Yeah.
I think tagging on that, uh, I forget their exact numbers, but I mean, when we look at our overall L cap, just as an example. I believe like. A very low percentage comparatively is less than half. Half of the percentage that the, we can actually measure the outcomes and impact. So largely it's output driven. So I think that speaks to an organizational culture. So to Commissioner Matomani's questions around the efficacy. And this isn't about personalization around individual staff, departments, divisions, not. Um, you know, doing quote their jobs. I think that are what I've seen both serving on the board. Being a parent advocate, being a parent period of work within the district, is we have a really hard time. Saying these are things we need to quote let go because they're not having the impact. So I think what I'm naming is you superintendent were as the board, because we did. The community work and engagement, we want to see that accountability and charge. I would say every single one of us. I write that. So I just wanna share that with you, Superintendent Mack, it's community, um, way you have of watch. The work of the years.
I'm gonna add, I'm gonna put another pin in there and then we can move on, but like, I, this is also, this comes up for me around the consent agenda contracts. Cause I don't know where this money is coming from, if it's been budgeted, if it's new, if it's, if we're moving funds around. And I also can't, I often in many of our contracts, I don't know which students are being served, how they're being. How we're measuring the, it's impactful and, and when it will come up for renewal, like so, so tightening. When I think about our budget, I actually think there's a lot of opportunity within our contracting to, um, to free up some cash.
Yeah.
Personally, so I'm just gonna.
Those are contracts that just automatically get rolled over.
Yeah, so one of the things we did in my last district, um, is we added in, so the operating procedures that you all just revamped. We added in a, an additional piece that isn't in yours, but we could create something. Uh, that articulated the board's expectations regarding uh items that the board's being asked to vote on. Um, and specifically in our case, and said if we're being asked to vote on an item, you know, with, you know, above, with a fiscal impact higher than X. Then, you know, we need to see, you know, A, B, and C. Uh, and so that, that's a reasonable thing to bake into your operating procedures. So for example, one of the things we baked in, um, if it's a contract renewal over X dollar amount. We expected to see, um, an evaluation of the contract, um, as one of the items attached to, uh, the board item. And if we saw something come up for renewal and there's no evaluation of it, definitely it wouldn't stay on consent. It would definitely come on a regular. And it was very likely the board like, you know, if we haven't evaluated the efficacy of this contract. And now we're asking to renew it for another three-year period, like we're not prepared to vote on this, and it would often just get tabled to the next board. He's like, you know, conduct an evaluation and come back to us, you know, delve into that or. Or explain to us why this, you know, can't reasonably be evaluated in advance, you know, of us determining whether or not to continue. So that's actually one example of how we baked into our operating procedures, what our expectations of the board were. Uh, for things with the superintendent brought forward. I know another board went through a similar process. They put in their operating procedures. That they wanted to see, um, exactly what you mentioned. They wanted to know. Um, in each board item, which account is this being drawn from? And is this represent? Is it, does this represent a move, uh, tran- transfer of dollars from one bucket to another? Or is this a bucket? Or is this a pre-budgeted amount? And it's just a drawdown on a budget amount. And so that, that's what they cared about. And so they just said automatically for things over X dollar amount, just automatically, you know. Just automatically, you know, put that in the item so that, you know, when we get it twelve days in advance, that's just one, you know, you have budgeted, 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 budgeted. Okay, not budgeted, okay, it's coming from, okay, got it, and then if you wanna ask a question about it, you got twelve days in advance to ask a question about it. And so, um, what I would encourage you all to do to extend that this is a concern for you. Um, I just spend a little bit of time thinking about what are the types of kind of reasonable and recurring things that would be helpful to just. Be baked into the process, you know, staff doesn't have to guess at what you might want, it's just built in. I I would not make, the 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 board items should not be encyclopedic in nature, let me, so let's not go wild. Um, but there's this, you know, basic reasonable things, uh, and at reasonable thresholds. Like, I wouldn't do it for every ten dollars, you know, but, you know, I, yeah, I'd be thoughtful about it. Just know that that's not an unusual uh practice, yeah.
Question around, um.
Is it, is it different from what she just asked?
It's a tie on it.
Okay.
Because, well, I appreciate around this potential practice around procedures, around the contracts. My question then is about site-based contracts.
Yeah.
We have a lot, uh, and this is, I think, just to be real, this is the balance of a district that has. Centralized budgeting versus site-based budgeting, right? And so I just wanted to name, get some coaching there potentially to kind of understand and think about. When we're talking about contract amounts, well, guess what, we have, each one of our sites are contracting out a lot of their work.
But the contracts are probably below the threshold.
Yeah, right, but at the same time, though, I guess that's my question, right? Is like, you have a portfolio of schools, but what strategy might they be having district-wide? Right, so that's just.
Yeah, so it it depends on the accumulation. So, um, in my current district, you know, the policy is essentially, if there is an accumulated spend with a particular vendor. Even if it happened to ten different disconnected sites, if the accumulated spend system-wide crosses the threshold, then it does in fact trigger.
I'm having two conflicting responses to this, this, this conversation. One is I totally agree with you, and in my previous district, we did not have clarity in in contracts. And I, I, um, we, we created a few processes that I've actually shared with people here and and shown, like, I think it'd be helpful to have. So on one hand, like, yeah, you know, that that would be, this is a need. The the conflict is, but I I feel like I wanna ask, I say, okay, now, is this an expectation? And how long do you think something like that actually would take to change? Uh, and, uh, you know, like, or is this just a discussion? That's what I was gonna say, you know, so there's a lot, there's so many things we could change, right? There's a lot of good ideas, you said, I, we're still following up on the ones from the board or procedure. So part of me wants to say, oh, you know what? Yeah, uh, there's a problem, and in some cases, very, I show you the, I show you the, you know, the 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 way it was on the board, yeah, that's seems very straightforward. On the other hand, I ask that question, I also know, if that's, you know, will take, take, you know, take the wild chain. But so we're throwing this out here, is this, is this an expectation or is this, is a nice to have, like, gotta be nice to have, but.
No, so what I was recommending is that you don't need to think this through and decide if that's something that you wanna do. Then you don't need to go through the same process you went through last time of eventually writing it. And then my same coaching last time will be, um, anytime you implement something like that. The business systems changes that require generally take three months, a full quarter to come online, so expect that. But your superintendent raises another point that I should have been vigilant about, so thank you for doing my job for me. Which is the question you also have to constantly be asking the board is, you know, is the juice worth the squeeze? Is is the benefit we'll get from this worth the amount of managerial attention it'll take from other things? Uh, if the answer to that is yes, then you do it, if the answer to that is no, then you don't.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, I feel like at first I want the other thing you were talking about, which is bucket. Right, yeah. Bucket Y, and then it's like, once we know what.
Yeah.
The contract bucket is, then I think we need to, then it's, we can do a deeper dive and understanding it. But I think at first, this process of the next five months, to me, is really, really important at a high level to be able to say like, what are we spending? I wanna know how much we're spending in contracts, period.
Mm-hmm.
You know, because we don't even have that. Right, it's not to guess, you know what I mean, like, those kind of questions around how are we, and what are they for, right? And in terms of, so it's not just, as AJ said, not just the accounting code, but a functional, yeah, strategic conversation. What is this money being spent on and why?
And how's it related to our goal?
Right, right, yeah.
So this is, this is the conversation, uh, I am, uh, as always grateful to be invited back to join you all for this. I I hope you feel like you understand why we spent time to talk through this, uh, because it's stuff better to sort out on the front end. Than to get in the middle of and try to wade through. Um, as you have additional questions about, um, ideal budgeting process. Feel free to reach out to me if it's something that, you know, we just need to talk to on a individual basis, I'll just make time for one-on-one. But if it's something that really needs to be surfaced, you know, to the level of the full board, uh, then I'll reach out to. Any board officers that ask ask for that, uh, but just know that you can reach out to, you know, me and the team anytime for one-on-ones to go through stuff, particularly go through this. Like I said, my one piece of additional homework immediately is I'll get you that technical, tactical, strategic document, it's a one-pager. Um, it's great reading, you'll enjoy it, um, as always, thank you for your time, I'm a chair, back to you.
Thank you, um, we are gonna need to take public comments, so at this time.
Um, one, um, public speaker in person, Jeff Lucas, you can step to the dice. Hi, good evening, um, Jeff Lucas. Um, one thing to start with is the vision, values, goals, and guardrails. I can't find that a current clean version of that on the website anywhere, all I see is October twenty-fifth markup version. Um, secondly. Uh, secondly is the capacity for the district to make changes is um is is pretty low. Um, earlier tonight, we heard, wow, payroll change, that was a mess. I think the budget is bigger and harder, so just, wow, I don't wanna say be patient, but. Start going in the right direction, um, continuous improvement is not speed, it's a journey of many, 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 many steps. And so start going in the right direction, I'll come up with priorities. Um, and, oh, it'll take a long time to get there. Um, next thing is guardrail four, um, to me, that's the one with the most meat in it. It's, you know, what does baseline sufficient mean? Um, the interim guardrail is uh going to identify base allocation for schools by February of twenty-twenty-four. Um, I've been anxious about this for ten months, I recognize, yeah, really, it's not gonna happen this year. Uh, but we can start making steps towards it. And when I get to the question of, um, that I wanna ask is, what is the baseline? And for all the money that is spent above the baseline, where does it go and why? And to put it in perspective, when I I dug in a lot of details, when I look at the high schools today, sorry, no.
So you finish up, finish up.
Seven high schools, kids can take seven classes, and six high schools, kids can take six classes. To me, I don't know where the equity is in that, um, and it's, it's a strategic thing, same thing happens at middle schools too. And we need to start making progress towards figuring out why that exists. And how that, um, helps us get to our goals, thank you.
Thank you. Um, for folks on Zoom, if you care to speak to this item, please raise your hand at this time, can that be repeated in Spanish and Chinese, please? Thank you. Sign on President Lim.
Thank you, that concludes public comment, I wanted to thank again AJ for your. Coaching and ongoing mentoring of, um, the governance team, and thank you to the, um. The team that also provides support and to our fiscal expert, uh, Elliot Deschon. And thank you to staff our, um, the, um, presentations tonight, engagement, and, um, appreciate you all. So I like to formally adjourn, adjourn our special meeting.